Good.
Oh, girl, not girl. Good girl. How are you?
Figured that wasn't worth her coming back in to be mean to us.
What?
It's very quiet in here.
Do we require that they build something within a certain amount of time on those leases? I don't recall seeing anything about that.
Uh, no, there's not a specific timeframe within. Most of them want to pull their permit before the lease gets issued.
Most of them are anxious anyway. Weaver County got folks going back in the office now?
Yeah, everybody's back.
You've fully reopened?
Yeah. We fully reopened a couple of weeks ago. And then even people who aren't folks were from home, I think by the fifteenth.
Everybody will come back to.
Here's what you get when you're the council chair.
That was in your letter?
I support you.
I get something from her almost every week.
Oh, is that from, uh, yeah. Poor lady. That's a weird situation there.
From her.
Okay, we don't have Gorman yet. No one's joining on by phone.
We got a clip for him. There's four of us.
Oh, yeah.
And we're live.
We're good.
I don't count myself.
You better start counting yourself.
If there's only four of us here, can you imagine how fast this meeting will go? It's gonna be amazing.
Okay, let's go ahead then and begin our work session. But if there's only four of us, I might call upon you.
Come on, we have to draw a hard line somewhere, Bob, and that's it.
Some form of worship.
A moment of silence?
A moment of silence.
All right, um, so the first thing on our work session is the 5:30 CARES Act. Let's see, CARES Act funding and small business grant funding from Wasatch Front Regional Council. So Tina, is this?
It's me.
I thought it was Mike's.
Sure.
It's me, but you'll have input on part of these too.
Yeah.
So wanted to make you aware that WFRC has some grant funding that they will be making available to the county. We had a discussion today with the folks. What's the name of that committee, Lance?
Regional Review Committee.
For, it's for housing projects is what it is, right?
CBDG.
CBDG, thank you. So the funding is coming as part of a CDBG deal, but it's been earmarked to be business grant funding.
Yeah.
And we had a discussion today. We agreed that there's about $300,000 that will be split between three counties, Weaver, Morgan, and Tooele Counties. Uh, we agreed to split half of that just equally, so we'll each get 50,000 and then the rest based on population, uh, which gives us a whole whopping $7,000 based on population. Weaver County has significantly more population than we do, so they'll get about 100,000 of that and, and, uh, I think it was like 80 or so, or no, 40 or something for, anyway. So we'll have about $57,000 that will come as part of that. WFRC is going to administer the, um, application process. They've got an online portal that they've contracted with that businesses will be able to go to and apply for the funding. But then there's several factors that we will decide as a council as to how we want to weight the different criteria and then which businesses will receive that funding. I guess the Mountain Land Association, which is Utah, Wasatch, and Summit Counties, did their, this, this funding for their businesses. They had 200 businesses apply in a matter of five days in those areas. So, um, what we've talked about is, is grants, uh, somewhere in the five to $10,000 range. We can decide if we want to have a, you know, a cap at 7,500 or 5,000, whatever we want the cap to be. They'd like us to decide on that before they put the, the application out there so the businesses know what they stand to get. Um, but we will also make it clear in the application process that if we get, you know, say we, we decide our max is $10,000, well, we only have $57,000 that would only help five businesses. And if we got applications from 10 businesses, we might say, okay, we're gonna max at 5,000. So we can, we can have some liberty to decide that, but that decision-making will come to us to make the decision as to who's going to get the, the funding or these grants. And then my understanding is WFRC will actually send the funds directly to those businesses.
That's good.
So, yeah, it's great, you know, a little extra funding, I think is good. So, so that's one thing I wanted to discuss. The other portion is we know that there's other funding that will be available soon. Does the state have it now? My understanding is they have it now, right? And now the legislature is deciding how to split this up, so.
It looks to me like, and Bonnie, you sent out the email on it as well. I've got one from you on it. The last one I saw had our allocated amounts between the city and the county. Is that your understanding? Is that we'll be split between the city and county based on population? Yeah, that's the way.
My understanding is they do have it.
Yeah.
First deposit coming to.
Yeah, and that we just have to sign that we abide by the regulations for it, which means it, and they are pretty strict.
Yeah, there's a lot of strings attached, as your email said, to that money.
Yeah.
There is, yeah. You sign like an interlocal agreement agreeing to their terms. And then whatever's left at the end of this year, we will be sending back if we get any of this.
Yeah.
So I, I think we need to at least kind of talk about what we want to do with that because, you know, some of the use, I think we've got some good uses for emergency management. It's designed to reimburse our costs related to COVID. Now, they have to be actual costs, not just, hey, we're gonna pay an employee unless it's something COVID-related, like if you had to pay an employee to go clean the parks extra or things like that, that would be additional costs.
And that's why I called Austin and asked.
Perhaps the microphone system here could be included in that because we had to go to online meetings. Putting a washer and dryer in the fire station can be included in that because we couldn't have people taking.
The Plexiglas.
The Plexiglas, like all of those things can, can count towards that. But as I understand it, there's also the ability to do some grant funding to businesses that are in need.
It's number.
And, and actually I see this money from WFRC as a really good opportunity for us to test the waters on that and see what kind of need there is because I feel like that will give us an opportunity to know, you know, which businesses apply and, and what they say their need is. Before we go too far down that road of saying, well, we're gonna, you know, try to do business grants out of that CARES Act funding.
So I've asked the, the chamber to send over the results of their survey out to the businesses, but apparently the chamber's office internet is down. I, I can't imagine that they're still having internet problems in the city. How surprising.
Well, and that's another item that I think, and I don't know if it'll qualify exactly for this, but it may be something to discuss, and that is internet access has been shown to be an issue in our county, right? And if you have to work from home, that's something that we need to be thinking about, how to, how to, you know, improve. And if there's an opportunity to use some of that funding to help get us better internet access, maybe that's something we need to explore. But anyway, I just wanted to have kind of a discussion on
How, how did.
How, how we might address this before, you know, we go too far into that. Because we only have a few months to deal with it.
Yeah, so we had the smaller amount that we were looking at from Bear and then the changes in Bear depending on what was left there. And Maresio and I have been working on the same type of, um, sorry, that's a text about, "Due to their internet issues," I'll read you what it says. "There are some sort of answer comments which I can't get to you right now due to internet issues, but these are the numerical answers I can get to you. Has your business been negatively impacted by COVID-19? Seventy-one percent yes, 29% no. What percentage of your annual revenue has been lost due to COVID-19? Forty answers ranging from zero to 100. Average loss is 27%. Have you terminated or furloughed any employees due to COVID-19? Eighteen percent yes, 82% said no." So that means that the PPP is not necessarily, or either they're applying for the PPP and have qualified, so. And then, "Have you been made aware of grants?" Eighty-three percent said they had and 17% said no. So then the application goes through. We took it from the PPP application process and the same type of questions where we're stuck is how do you determine whether or not they're answering honestly on, "Did you receive other grant funding?" There isn't a way to check on that. And then how do you decide? The risk of survival versus the risk going in. Now, Ty at the city had some recommendations over, we would do the same thing through the clerk's office for anyone who was already behind on billing. You would know that this wasn't necessarily something that was happening going in or happening because of the shutdown, but was happening going in to a shutdown. So you would have a better understanding of where your business risks were throughout the county. And then based on the, the NAICS code, you could also tell based on which industries were impacted the most. But it really comes back to this body for how, who and how and how much. One of the things that I have learned reaching out, every, we are about the only county, even among the small rural counties, in Daggett County, they already have established programs available for grants and economic development loan, revolving loan funds. I don't know what that says about us, whether that's good or bad, but we, we are one of the few that weren't already situated in a, in a position to have a quicker turnaround on making funding available. I don't know if I.
So I guess from my perspective, I guess I'd be, it'd be nice if we had like a list of the issues you want us to decide if you want to make a recommendation. You mentioned, you know, the amount. And, I mean, if it's better to spread it among more or less numbers of businesses or.
But I, I think, see, I, I've had this discussion with several different people and part of my argument is if you give a business $1,000, is that really going to have an impact? I don't know. Probably depends on the type of business, right? But to me, it's probably not going to be enough to keep their doors open or to keep an employee. And now we're hopefully on the tail end of things. All businesses should be open at this point, which is good. But maybe they need a little funding to help stay afloat. I honestly, I, I feel like what we need to do initially is give WFRC whatever we want to have them list on that application as our max that could be granted to them. That doesn't mean that that's what they'll get, but at least give them that. And then we can get those applications from them and determine, to me, based on the number of applications we get through that, will really help us determine what to do with any other funding as well because it'll, you know, if we only get eight businesses in the county that apply, well, then we probably don't need additional funding. But if we get 50 businesses applied, then maybe we need to go down the road of, of helping find additional funding. Of course, I saw today that Go-Ed still has rent assistant funding available.
Yeah, that, I got that notice.
Lance, you had something?
I, with the community development block grant, I mean, uh, the county criteria really comes down to, do you want to give a few people a little bit of money or five businesses, 10 grand each, you know? Or do you want to draw the line? I think that's the hardest decision in that criteria. It does come down to low and moderate income, you know, how we're assisting there and if we have to show profits and loss statements and that type of thing. So we can base it on need, a low and moderate income. The question is, is, you know, want to give everybody 3,000 or a lot of people 3,000 or just a few? And that's the hard question.
Yeah, and, and that's where, that's what we've run into with the Bear funds. There's so little, but can you really even make an impact and? But where.
You know, speaking of Bear funds, we may be able to piggyback off of this. You know, if we have, say, we get 10 applicants and we need a little extra, maybe we could pull from the Bear funds to.
Well, and honestly, where I see it going is this will be a piggyback into the CARES Act funding because if you go to, it is item number five. I couldn't remember if it was number four or number five, but it's number five and it's expenditures related to the provision of grants to small businesses to reimburse the cost of business interruption caused by required closures. But one of the things that I didn't ask, going back to the county-related expenses, if we had expenses to improve telework capabilities for public employees to enable compliance with COVID-19 public health precautions, if we ran into any of those in.
Has to be public employees.
Well, this is of the, of the other four items, there's quite a list. But in going through what, what Austin and I talked about on the expenses.
Try a copy of this for everybody.
Yeah.
Judges.
Yeah, I was like, yeah.
Just trying to show respect. Here's a copy of what she's reading out of.
Yeah.
So.
Sorry.
Well, you mentioned, you know, you talked about doing everybody a thousand dollars or. And, you know, we talked the other day, what is it that the businesses complain about the most? If they need, you know, they're competitive and they're always talking about the internet. Now, the city got Utopia, and so they're helping businesses in the city, but we still have everybody in the county that's still dealing with the same issues. Maybe they're more interested, instead of giving me a thousand dollars, so what am I gonna do with it? If we can do something to get internet here that gives everybody's good high-quality internet access, phone access, you know, everything that they need to run their business, maybe that's more valuable to them than a thousand dollars that they can't even throw a company party with.
Yeah, and it may very well be the, the CDBG funds to WFRC. We can't just spend on whatever we want. They have to go as business grants, but.
That's the same with.
Maybe the CARE funding, I don't know.
So, no, and see, I, I've looked through all of those things that we could help in overall, but it's the expenditures related to the provision of grants to small businesses to reimburse the cost of business interruption. So if you went around, so, and Ty and I had that discussion at length over, well, if they are unable to pay their property taxes, does that mean that that would fall under, um, a loss in revenue for the city? That the city could not count because we cannot replace revenue with it? But if we were giving a grant to a business who was struggling and they turned around and used it to pay their property taxes, is that, are we, are we walking a line? And that's where all of my conversations with people who've had to oversee, and Ty's a great one on this too, if you get tasked with the investigation portion of this.
That's what he was talking about yesterday about.
Yeah.
Inability could be a.
Huge on it. And so we, we need to be very cognizant of anything that we do. We are following the letter of the law because there is very little spirit of the law in federal government programs. But that's where I don't see where we can do, unless we're doing expenses to facilitate distance learning, including technological improvements in connection with school closings to enable compliance with COVID-19, you could possibly base internet based on that one.
And that's the one that I was looking at a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
Where the expenses for establishing and operating public telemedicine capabilities. I know we wouldn't be establishing the medicine, but the capability to do.
The capability, it, it's that capability.
Was their inability to read their.
Yeah.
X-rays and the different documents that they had to do and they couldn't transfer. So I'll just go ahead and tell you, I, I reached out to All West about three, two, three weeks ago and just, you know, were you happy? You still planning on coming? Had a nice conversation with one of their gentlemen. He went back, had multiple conversations with their executive board, with their president and owner, and they are very committed to coming to Morgan. But they're a little bit gun-shy because of what happened with the Utopia thing. So they're asking, what can we show that there's some commitment from the county? Not necessarily the county getting a pony of money, but what can we show that we are willing to partner and make it worth their time to come? Because if they come, they want to go 100%. They want to go countywide. They want to go to every corner of the county and make sure everybody has access to their fiber optics. They don't want to just come find a nice cul-de-sac or subdivision where they think they can pull some pretty good chunk and run one line there like Beehive is doing in Enterprise. They're, they're interested in broadcasting to the entire county with fiber and getting every individual the opportunity to have good internet. All they're asking is, is the council in consensus with this? This is an email I got as I was walking in. Actually, I just sat down and read it now because I haven't got it before. Is the council in a consensus that they want us to come? Is there people willing to partner with us in some of these grant opportunities? Would the school and/or the county be willing to partner in an opportunity to write a grant to help get some of the funding so that we can get these areas that are not served with decent internet covered? So that if something like this were happening again, kids can do their homework from school. That's one thing we found out. There's a lot of areas of this county, kids were not able to do homework.
Right.
They were using Wi-Fi hotspots or hotspots off parents' phones to get their homework done. And a lot of cases, they were using the phones or checked out a Chromebook from the school in order to be able to do, even do their homework. So I know we, we kind of look at Morgan as a, as a higher-end county that doesn't have a lot of these rural issues, but.
No, internet, we definitely do.
We are, we're worse off. Their service area is Camas to Rock Springs. And, uh, they have better internet in those little teeny-tiny communities than Morgan County.
Vernal has by far better internet than we do. But Robert, I'm curious if they asked you, because the last conversation that I had with All West, one of the things that they had asked for before they came in is they wanted a commitment from the county that the county would, would do a long-term service agreement for internet.
They did, and I talked to Jeremy and he just signed a agreement with Century Lincoln April and switched us off of that crappy RISE.
How long is that contract and should that?
It's a three-year contract, but he did say that it's only this building and that we still have the fairgrounds, the library, and the public works department are still on RISE. Well, fairgrounds is even on RISE. Fairgrounds is on Verizon and MiFi's. So he just sets them up where they're using the fairgrounds.
So what happened with Utopia? Did something happen with Utopia?
So, I don't know how much we could go into, but.
So the city.
Really hard to try and get All West to bring internet to the city.
So they got as far as Taggart's and were, they were coming down to the city.
That's not very far into the county from my perspective.
Right. But you don't know how difficult that was, but they were coming down the, the UDOT, um, corridor and using their right-of-way. And so we had, we had worked really hard for it to bring them in to service the full county. And then the city decided to, to sign on with All West. And so that was the low-hanging fruit that All West was coming for.
Sign on with Utopia.
So they did, yeah, they, they have gone with.
They got their conduit to the off-ramp right here about the same time the city announced their contract with Utopia.
Yeah, so All West came to that meeting and tried and the city went with.
Okay.
So, but, you know.
So it's here. It's, it's to the city, isn't it?
The conduit is to the city now.
Oh, but the line hasn't been pulled since the date.
They said that's just a matter of pulling the cable through the line, which is a piece of cake. But they said before we purchase all that cable and we start putting it in the ground.
It was, it was 2 million in expenses that they had already had.
And they want to contact some businesses outside the city and different areas, you know, and see if businesses are interested or if they're good with what they've got. You know, and that's just a marketing thing.
They were very interested in WFRC, or not WFRC, but on Wasatch Peaks.
Yeah, Wasatch Peaks, they've already been in contact with them and were trying to work something out with them. But they really want to hit countywide.
It seems to me like there's at least three items here that we could potentially say, but that being said, I don't want to stretch it so far that, Austin.
Not to be a naysayer, but if we go through this, expenses to improve telework capabilities for public employees to enable compliance. When, when we take this money and we utilize it, the city is gonna come in with a fine-tooth comb. And if it doesn't match, we pay it back.
Yeah.
So that's part of this case that has to.
Read the one above that. Expenses to improve telework capabilities for public employees. And then, but the one above that is expenses to facilitate distance learning, including technological improvements to connection for schools.
For students to be able to learn from home.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah. That's the, that's the one we were just discussing, was that one. And, and understand that they're not asking us to just figure out a way to get them money. They want to apply for some of these grants.
But they want a guaranteed contract so that they know.
Well, they. Well, so, like where I live in the Cottonwoods, there's two different fiber providers. None of them will come down my street. So they're up on the hill this way and they're up on the hill that way, but they won't come down. So when you say they want guaranteed contracts, we're not. We're not granting them an exclusive franchise with respect to the whole county. That's not what they're.
The last conversation I had was with the, with the county building, so I, I'd be curious what our cancellation is on that contract.
So I let him know that we had entered into that contract and he just kind of said, well, bummer. Can't blame them for not wanting to wait, you know? And so he's interested in what the other three locations are and, and just any, you know, really, they're, they're, they're being quite, they really want to do something. And they're just saying, let's, let's identify areas where we can create partnerships that'll make this work for everybody. Uh, you know, anything they can do to help the school, anything they can do to help the county, anything they can do even to help people in the city if that's the direction they want to go. They want to, they want to make this work for everybody. You know, if we've got a new development coming in, if a developer wants to work something, if they've got new businesses coming in, like the new stuff with Jagi and Paul down there that we just did the zone change with, those kind of things. They just want information as to what's happening in Morgan and they, they'll send their salespeople out to make these contacts. They just want to know that the county and the county council are behind us and it's something that they're interested in. We're not necessarily looking to the county to fund it. They're, now, if there's any appetites for grants, they would definitely like us, you know, if we partner with them on a grant, they would love to be part of some. know, if we partner with them on a grant, they would love to be part of something like that to help just kind of.
There are a couple of federal grants that we had talked about doing something with that are still available through the infrastructure. There, they, there are several that you could partner with, 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 well, anyone who wanted to do it, you would, to do the internet countywide. So, there is that opportunity.
And really, all he's asking for me, if I can get tonight, is a consensus as whether or not this is something that the county council is interested in and would like them to continue to pursue.
So is this the group that was at the Business Expo?
Yeah, they, they've been very supportive of the Chamber and have done a lot of the events with Chamber.
I certainly don't have any objection to.
No, I, I'm supportive of her.
Having decent internet.
Having decent internet.
I know.
Providing to come in and do it, it's a big expense for the Chamber.
I've tried to just get by for years and I'm finally paying enough that they're giving me enough bandwidth that I can just get by, but through this thing, it's been, on weekends it's non-existent.
Yeah, it's very hard to doubt.
My husband watches football film and the colorful language that comes out when it won't rewind or fast forward.
So.
It's pretty.
I don't, independent of what we can, if we can use any of the funds from this connection with it.
Yeah, without my commitment to anything, just if.
Yeah, I would, I would certainly be in favor. We don't have any other providers that are interested in doing that.
I think everyone in Morgan County would be in favor.
Very grateful.
I will pass that on, let them know.
And I, I had done a survey of the businesses in Mountain Green, they have the very same problems there, and there are multiple, multiple businesses in the Mountain Green area that are using repetitive services to guarantee service, so.
So, I don't know if we've answered your questions.
So, the one question that, that I'd need answered initially is just to tell WFRC or their application process, what do we want to list as the max? Basically, everything else is going to be very flexible. They'll send us the, the applications and then we go through and decide.
And we have 67 slides?
Uh, no, 57.
57.
Yeah, 57 and change, because that was based on rounded population numbers. They were going to get the census numbers to get us an exact amount, but what it worked out to was about 59 cents per resident.
If it's stating the maximum, from my perspective, we could go with the 10,000.
Leave the 10,000 as the maximum. We can always do less than that, but at least.
Yeah, depending on the number of applicants.
And if we have less applicants, we go more, right?
Okay.
Everybody good with that?
Yes, sir.
The WFRC stuff, okay.
Okay, is that?
And that's really all I need to know for that.
Okay. Bonnie?
Yes.
Budget discussion.
The first thing I wanted to bring up was the Hatch Reform Act is absolutely dead. So, we need to do a budget presentation before we have to. Yeah, so if you'll turn to page 17 in your, in what I sent you in your packet, it'll go first to Road Fund. So for your financial statements, it's page 17.
To Class B.
I really wanted a paper copy.
17.
Page 17, your financial statement.
Got it.
Stay tuned.
What? I feel like he's bitter.
Huh?
He seems a little bitter.
It's because he's not in and he knows he's in trouble.
He's probably angry.
No, it's because, I guess, true.
He normally brings his lunch and he didn't bring it today, so he's angry.
Crackers on my armrest.
So, this that I just handed you was round one of our budgeting with the Road Department. And what it will show you in round one is that, first round of estimates from the Class B Road Fund was about $470,000. We're pulling $300,000 out of the general fund. What I'm bringing you now is round two, where we reestimated what we were going to get out of Class B, and then we decided to not take anything out of the general fund. So we raised the Class B up to 510 rather than 400.
And then we were supposed to get the other 417 or whatever it was.
So that was what we talked about, the additional 400 we were supposed to get. Because two meetings ago, we reduced the Road Fund.
To the 500,000.
We just need to do a, cut it out, like, divide your.
No, no, we've got to do the resolution.
It's actually, it's up.
But we have agreed not to spend that money and not.
Right, so, here's another note. So by the time we were done with the budget, here's round number three, where you left the Class B at 510 with the expectation that you were going to get the new tax for 417,000. So if you will look at page 17 in your budget book, you will see that that 1,927 is the amount that we landed on the budget with the 510 of Class B and 417 from your new tax.
So we just need to take the 417 now.
So we just, right now, we set at 927,000, which is 510 from Class B and 417 from the new tax. So Bonnie and I have been working with the accountants.
So we're actually down January to January's money in Class B. Is that what you're seeing, Bonnie? You're down slightly in Class B?
Down slightly in January, but in March, we're up.
A little bit, yeah. In May, May substantial.
May, yeah, we just got the May one, which is, it's like two months in arrears, actually.
Mm-hmm, so this is before we went into lockdown?
Yeah, so when we were talking to the accountants, they suggested that Bonnie and I sit in front of you and remind you that that 417 is not coming, and that you may want to anticipate that there could be up to a 25% cut in anything that's tax-related due to the pandemic, and that you probably should budget accordingly, and most especially have a conversation with the Road Department as you're climbing these road projects so that at the end of the year, we're not left short.
So, I feel like we've already done that, haven't we?
Yeah, we've done that, and where we're at is, starting the first of June, they will start their road projects. The road projects that we've identified, based on the bids that we received, will be completed basically two weeks later. It's a two-week paving project. It'll be a little bit longer on the chip seal, depending on when they mobilize to do the chip seal. But, so we should know roughly by July where we're sitting and if we have to transfer money out of the general fund to cover any of the road projects. So I would almost recommend, unless it doesn't work with your guys' numbers, that we hold off on doing this resolution until we actually know what those numbers are, because we're going to know them fairly quick. It's not something that's going to drag on till September, October even, so.
You can absolutely still count all of these Class B road deposits with a possible, they said right now it's 13% down, but I talked to UDOT and they said the receipts are about 25% down, the car sales are about 25% down. So that is it for sure. That 417 is an absolute, we are not going to get it.
Correct.
They said, you know, we're presenting a false picture to our public. We need to take that.
I, I don't have an issue if we just do a budget resolution, remove the 417, put it back at the 510. That's what we've budgeted to spend. If we end up spending less or more than that, or we don't get that 510, then we'll make an adjustment.
Resolution is.
At the end of the year, we can do that.
That was what they, as far as.
I think that's an interesting comment because our budget every year is nothing but a false pretense to the public, because we all know.
Well, and, you know, we all also need to make sure, and I know that we've got good communication with the, we'll, we'll need to really talk to them throughout the year and watch these numbers because of this unique situation this year. Number one, that we lost that 417 that we were anticipating, and number two, because we are getting different calculations of what percentage we will be down. We had boasted all the way up to 510, and now one prediction is we'll be down 12%, another one is all the way down to 25%. And we don't want to leave him in a situation where, you know, he's going out and thinking, I'm, I've got at least 510,000 to work with and come to the end of the year, we're in another phase of pandemic or whatever, and it's much worse than we think on May 19th.
We, I knew his bid was about 400,000.
Uh, pretty close to 500, a little over 500.
As I pointed out to Cog yesterday, if we're following the example of the state of Utah, we would go out and bond. Now, Bonnie, I know how uncomfortable that makes you, you are not a bonding fan, but I found it a little ironic to watch the, the reaction of governments across the state because we are set up on a system where we are taxing commercial property 40% more than we're on residential. The impact to business will impact our revenue, there is no way around this. Whether that is in property tax or personal property tax.
Or sales tax.
Or a sales tax. We're going to fill this.
We've already had people, we had a phone call today, in fact, and this particular person balanced, they didn't pay their 19 taxes, and they're wondering why they have to pay the penalties of interest. This is from last year, 20 years, so we've had several phone calls related, and I've heard from some of the other trades, that it's being talked about, like waiting or extending.
Yeah, they're, so, and that's what the IRS did right off the bat, is on payroll taxes, they, you had to file the report, but the, the tax was not due until 2021. So it was a zero-interest loan on, on payroll taxes, but income tax is extended till June, just on the filing and then on the payment, so.
Paying too.
Yeah, the filing and the payment on income tax was extended.
The state has, they're deciding a budget right now, and they're talking about, that they figure it will be possibly a $600,000, $600 million shortfall, possibly, and they're asking them to do two, five or 10% cuts. I did talk to Ty too, and he said they're in the process of setting their budget right now, and they're across the board doing 25% cuts to, but he did also say that he received a projection on the sales tax, or Laurie did, and for the next deposit that we'll get, she said it was actually about $2,000 more than last year or so.
Our local, our local businesses that are dependent on sales, retail sales.
They're up.
Have you ever seen that many cars that tractors supply?
Have you ever, have you been to Walmart or have you go later?
Well, the, the biggest majority of our sales tax is coming from the dealership, and they have moved, they're, they're doing more in repair work and maintenance work, but that is not taxable. That's not sales tax, the same way that, they were at their first month in new car sales based on the incentives, so.
I was going to say, there's still sales tax on it, it's just not on the value.
Not on the labor, it's on the parts, but not in the labor. So it's not the same, it's not like buying a new car, is what it.
Right, but, but he did say that the incentives with the car dealers are after, they were so good that.
They are.
But I talked to a Chris Potter at UDOT, he's a lot, and said that the car sale and the gas tax was taxed, was down about 25%.
Yeah.
That's probably, I mean, everybody's got their projections. We, the state has a pretty healthy fund balance, if they figure against their business.
So, in terms of a budget resolution, Brenda will come in, I think, at our next meeting and make a presentation on her budget. I thought we had approved her budget consistent with last year, and the difference was only in a rate of pay for the part-time employees, so it was like a $600 difference, and I said, it'll come out in the wash one way or the other. But there's also a reduction in the amount of hours in the budget that we approved from what she said was approved last year. And I said, you come in and make your presentation to the council or not. I'm, I'm happy to support it, but I'm not going to be the one that tries to communicate it, because, so, that may be a part of the overall budget resolution as well. Okay. Sorry, I interrupted.
Oh, I was just going to ask, so, one of the requests that I had when I asked for budget was the fund balances for any of our savings accounts on any of those. Page 19, is that what that's telling us about the Road Fund? Tell me exactly what each of those numbers is.
Page 19 is actually the flooded Mizachter Fund.
Oh, let me look at the bottom here. Page 16.
So, yeah, so the page number, not necessarily the actual page.
Yeah, I was doing the PDF page, not the page number on your document.
Yeah.
If you can go to page number two of the report, not of the document, but of the report, they've also pointed out to us that by reducing the 300, so last year we took 300,000 out of the general fund balance and moved it over to the Road Fund like we have been doing in the past. Our general fund balance is down under the million mark now.
At 940.
That's actually page 100.
So was that, page 16, is that?
Yeah, I think.
Page 16 would be your Road Fund balance?
That's the fund balance. That's not what we budgeted this year, that's the money that's sitting aside.
In your circumstances?
And that's, that's kind of what we, when we had that discussion about, you know, we cut the 400 off but left it right around the 510, that's the money that we were looking at tapping into, not general fund balance. It was that money to tap.
This 427.
That's definitely an option you'd say would use.
But that's where it starts to worry me, Bonnie, because one of the things, we've been, we've been using that cushion, I want, it's, it's not really a cushion, but you know what I mean. And when we spent the money, we've spent some of the impact fee money that was also part of that, and, and we're getting into.
No, I don't have a cushion.
Exactly, so even though we may on paper, it's not going to be enough to float the whole year the way we've done. Are we going to end up taking out some sort of bridge loan to get us through the rest of the year based on the projections that you're seeing now?
Um, I don't think so, but I know, I talked to Ryan to say, and anytime that we need to do that, I mean, they offer that 10 bridge loan to get you through the year, take you back in January. So we're past that deadline, but I've asked him before, you know, who's driving the line? He's always said, you bet.
Yeah, I, I think based on our, based on our, we've always been in a great place financially, and because we do not have an on-term, an ongoing loan, and we're now having paid off the one bond that there was, we're in a.
The little bonds paid off, so that's, that's going to be good.
Yeah, so.
I, I really do think we're going to be okay. We, our fund balance did drop because it's down to about 830, and we, because we'd be at a million if we, you know, had the money to prove. But I still think we're going to be okay. I think we're going to see some differences for sure, but, and if we have to wait on our fund balance, we do.
So.
I don't know, the people in this town just, they view their property taxes as just a very high priority, obviously, the officers. They just really have some good payers, and we've got tons of people already paying, tons of people. I think when that stimulus payment came in, there was 50 people that turned it around and brought it.
Really?
Just to give one up.
Yeah.
Sure, it would have been nice to qualify for that.
Stimulus check too?
I don't know. I just, I just feel that.
So we'll just collect, keep the first stimulus check and wait for the.
They don't have money set aside.
I don't qualify. It sucks. I don't get any of that. My kids are worthless, don't get any stimulus, sucks to be me.
Okay, anything else, Bonnie?
No, that's.
So, I guess the question would be, do we want, obviously, we can hear Brenda out next meeting, and then we can either prepare a budget resolution and move on it next month, or we can wait, find out what the actual final amount is and then do it then, is that?
Well, if they really want us to take that 400 off, then I guess we can just do two, one now and one later.
Well, I think we just skipped over the elephant in the room. If the city is down 20, is cutting 25%, where are they cutting? Because the majority, the vast majority of our, of our budget is payroll. How, how are they cutting 25%?
I didn't ask him how, he just said that's what he, he said he felt like that was a very conservative.
Is he cutting 25% in payroll? Because, overall, the, what is it? It's over 70%.
I mean, I feel like it may not hurt to ask, or the department has to. I mean, I feel like it may not hurt to ask, or department has to, I don't know if I have to cut something or just ask them to be really physically responsible and just really only stick to essentials.
To hurt that. Lance, is your department down? Because you're one of the ones that is not dependent on.
We're up 12 permits from last year in March.
Yeah.
Permits are coming in like 30 times a day.
Yeah, that's, I was actually talking to.
House sales are going up.
Yeah, that's, everything we heard last night at Cog, house sales are up. I talked to two developers last night. They said the same thing, that everywhere, that from, from the Wasatch front on, on down through Southern Utah, everything is up.
And then the building supplies apparently have dropped, prices have dropped. So the ones that are doing it are moving.
The recommendation for us to come to you to get this issue on the table was, one, to make sure you knew that that tax reform had been repealed and that 400 wasn't coming through and to make sure that we remove that from the books so that there wasn't an anticipation that it was being spent. And two, to notify you that the class B monies may be lower this year, X amount to X amount percent based on gas, travel, that. Those were all related to the road. When we had our conversation with the accountants, it had nothing to do with sales tax or anything like that. It was all, number one, make sure you acknowledge that that tax reform had been repealed and to remove it from the books so that it's not misunderstood that that's still standable.
I'm impressed definitely.
And as far as I'm concerned, the good news is, when it went down, it was a low travel time of the year and now we're opening back up and gas prices are low.
I think we're gonna make up for it at least somewhat.
Oh, I do too. I mean, you know, there for a while and there was no one driving and you notice like this trickle suddenly. Feels like to me anyway.
I actually made it through solvated without traffic jams like three times during the year.
My suggestion at this point is just let's like not let that 400,000 maybe with, a resolution at this point is not, isn't that good enough? And it's just writing a resolution and saying this when we get to the budget adjustment point. Don't forget this is one thing we need to do.
Okay.
Personally, I want the resolution, I want it gone. I don't want to have it on the books anymore. We keep, before, we keep talking about transferring money, well, it never gets transferred until right at the end and sometimes we transfer, sometimes we don't. It ends up giving us a false sense where our budget is. So I personally, I would rather have a resolution, have that 417 gone and then deal with another one when we get to the end of the road project. But that's my opinion.
So you're saying a budget amendment via resolution?
I think that's what we all agree to.
And that would be a full budget amendment, what he's talking about, not just writing the resolution right until December. That would be opening the budget, doing a amendment to the budget.
But that is actually how they recommend we do it all the time. That it isn't one time at the end of the year. That is as we run into the problem, we're doing it consistently throughout the year.
We can do that. I would just, like I said, ask you to listen to Brenda next time and then let's combine and make what, we'll do them both at the same time, whatever that decision had to be.
So when we go through the tax rate setting process in June, July, and you set the actual rate, you should adjust the budget at that time as well. Because in November, you set the property tax revenue at X, thinking that's what was gonna be in November. When you actually set the rate and you know what that's going to be in July, you should set your budget with what it's actually going to be. So we could open the budget in July and make that adjustment, that adjustment, and these tax rate adjustments all at once. So we can write a resolution to adjust, you know, we resolve that in, when we open the budget, we will make this adjustment. If you decide to make an adjustment, next meeting, we'll write a resolution to that effect. And then come July, when we're setting the tax rates, we will actually open the budget at that time and take any of the collective resolutions we've written in the past as well as these tax rates and open the budget at that time. Are you comfortable with that?
No.
No?
Well, no, I'm fine. I just want it gone before we get to the end of the year.
July's fine, if we do it in July?
I'm fine if you want to go through July, but.
Well, actually, if you're concerned about, if I'm understanding Roland's concern, right, you would want to do it now, adjust it down so that when you're in July, you're not, you're not saying, we're setting it at this rate to make up for a $417 shortage, or 417,000.
She said do a resolution.
Do a resolution. When you open the budget, you actually have to advertise for two weeks and you hold a public hearing. And to hold a public hearing for one adjustment at a time, you could, you know, it's a duplicate.
But I think that's, isn't that what they've always said we are doing wrong in our budgeting processes? That we are not, we're waiting and doing it because it's, it isn't an involved process, we're pushing it off and then we get, yeah, and then we get dinged on the audit for it.
But we could do it in July and do it for this and that and this tax rate.
Okay. All right, but I'm holding you to it. If we get dinged again this year, I'm.
You got it.
Okay, let's proceed in that way. So obviously, we didn't open this up to public attendance. Did you need anything else?
I don't know. I'm good.
Okay. Austin, did you have anything? Okay, we didn't open this up for a public attendance, but I would like to open up for our next meeting. But I think under the guidelines, we're still supposed to maintain six foot social distancing. So what I'm suggesting is that we have the staff remove chairs from this room and place them at six feet apart. And if, once we get the capacity, that people stand in the hallway at six feet apart and we may want to just put masking tape down on the floor so that they know what it is. It'd be nice if we could get the little fancy stand here, but I don't, well, we could pay for it out of this money. But let's just, this masking tape that says stand here as far as I'm concerned, you know. I mean, that would be important to have fancy little signs on the floor. But that, and then, I'm, I'm perfectly happy having everyone, people come back in, but I think we ought to try to maintain that. We can push the, to the far wall so that we can maximize, but I don't know who, who would we ask to arrange the chairs, Brett?
So while we're on that note, Austin, what you're seeing in the numbers, you're not seeing an increase, are you? I'm hearing that the numbers are still looking good, that we're not seeing.
It was the worst day again.
Well, today was the worst day in terms of COVID-19 deaths, but the actual new case number was at or below the average, right?
We haven't.
It was 134 today.
But it did, it was going down and ticked up a little bit, but not a lot.
So are we still down in the number of people who are testing? Because.
Well, yeah, there's still being, there's still being, you still have to have some symptoms.
Really? I would think we'd start testing.
Now, if they do come up with, is it a serological test that tests for the antibodies?
No, well.
They don't have one yet, but if they had one.
There are three cities.
They had one, then I might be inclined to spend some of that money to get that done.
Yeah, I would love to.
They've been discussing it for weeks now and they aren't being, gonna be the ones that supposedly do it. It's kind of expensive test, I think.
It's 45 bucks a person.
Let me look again if that's covered in here.
Cause I, I mean.
I'm curious. I would really be curious to know how many in the community.
I think that would be incredibly useful information for people. Even if you're not necessarily immune, if you've had it previously, you're gonna feel more comfortable. Especially if you didn't even know.
I think Daryl has had it because of his medication. He had no symptoms.
It's quite possible.
Are you taking malaria medication?
I sure am.
You and Donald.
Yeah, both of us.
All right. Do we need to just recess for a few minutes before we begin? Are you guys ready?
I just have one thing. Would it be possible to come back together in work session at the end of the meeting? I've got one more item. It's time sensitive. I need to bring it for the council.
Yeah. And then I frankly think we should do a closed session. I just want an update from Mr. Ferris on some of the litigation. I'm writing this down. I would get if I could get, don't be hesitant to remind you.
Everybody else reminds us too.
So you are doing, so we're doing closing and then work, we're doing closing and then work session?
I think we could do work session and then.
And then close.
Yeah, mine's not top secret. It's, I want it out there in the public. I just need to bring it up to council and see what you think, so.
Are we still off on the fair? Is that still not happening?
Well, that was one of the other things we were gonna talk about. We could talk about that too.
Yeah, we can talk about that too.
We were gonna bring that up.
We haven't had a fair board meeting since our last meeting. There will be one first Monday in June. But things have changed since the last one, so.
Yeah, so we, we spent, part of the advertising money went to the golf tournament, everybody get a team. But I still have that second set of money and I don't want to give it, East Canyon wants it and I don't want to give it to Chris if we're gonna need it for the fair. So if you're gonna, will you guys let me know?
Yes. Well, that's what we, when we come back into work session, we're gonna discuss that.
Okay. Yeah.
Who you got?
I'm gonna be sorry, I didn't remember. I don't even recognize that. Sorry, was that?
Yeah, my turn.
It's not at me. I don't think I'm the only one who's struggling.
See, my front door, which is really high, I have trees in.
I know a county, I think you struggle with it.
We've got a straight shot to the, so. I did have some issues.
Now that I've changed my routing and course. Now that I'm coming up for air, I'm noticing what's going on in my home community right now. Now that Daryl cannot run.
Are you mad at me?
He's just running.
Got some other things that I take care of.
Yeah, you and I are gonna go back to. Have to, yeah, after all the phone calls. Sure Lance, call the agenda item after I spend five days answering personal phone calls at house. And she loves me.
I keep Verizon's backup.
I didn't do the water meeting. I got the invitation to the water meeting and went. I didn't set the water meeting. I did, I got an invitation. Look, I know everyone wants to blame me for setting up water meetings. I had nothing to do with it. I got an invitation and went, why are they giving an invitation to a water meeting? And then Kara Burke, who took open lines place, she texted me and said, why are you inviting me to a water meeting? And I'm like, I didn't invite anybody to a water meeting. I don't know how I got an invitation to a water meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I think those, I think those, the copies that we passed out last week.
Oh, is that what those are?
Yeah.
But none of them were signed.
That's because the signed ones are in here.
Oh, okay.
Sarah had the same.
Okay, welcome to the Morgan County Council meeting for Tuesday, May 19th, 2020. All members of the council are present and we will begin with a prayer and pledge by Member Cannon.
Our Father in Heaven, as we come before thee this evening in prayer, we are so very grateful for the opportunity we have to meet together as a county council and to serve our community in so many ways. May I say to be with us this evening in spirit, that we will be able to always keep in mind those who we serve and those who we represent, that we will be able to make those decisions that will serve the greater good and that we may do so in a spirit of cooperation and gratitude for the blessings which we are given. We say these things, Father, thanking thee again for the blessing we have to live in this great nation and this great community. In the name of our Savior Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So are there any proposed changes to the agenda?
I'm not sure, are you adding the work session and close on your agenda?
Yeah, we will continue the work session at the end of the listed items on the agenda and then following that, we will go into an executive or closed session. And concluding that, we will just close the meeting.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with those two changes.
A second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Are there minutes? Declaration of conflicts of interest. Okay. Hearing none, we'll move into our public comment period. I don't have anything that was printed to read. I know there were some on the agenda item that was removed.
Yeah, Ed Schultz, you should have received.
I do, I do have Ed Schultz listed here, so other, yep, let's go ahead and give him a call.
This is Ed.
Ed, this is Robert McConnell at the Morgan County Council. We had you indicate you wanted to speak during the public comment period, so this is your opportunity. Hope things are going well.
For good. Okay, thank you for the call. Just a couple of quick things to say. So hello to all the council members and thank you for your time this evening. I wanted to give an update on Watseth Peach Ranch and the appeal that is ongoing against Morgan County and therefore WPR by the Postette Division Morgan Alliance. I forwarded each of you a more detailed document that attempts to address some of their concerns and their statements. We have made this document available on our website at WPRDEVCO.com and I welcome sharing, you sharing this document that we sent each of you. A couple of concerns that I wanted to touch on tonight. These community members have expressed concern that the county's review and approval of WPR zoning application was not as thorough as it should have been. We feel that this is inaccurate. We worked closely with the county to ensure that the review process was significantly more rigorous than was required under the Morgan County Land Use Ordinance and that there were ample opportunities for public comment. The county reviewed public process included two parts. First, we voluntarily hosted two public open houses. The first was located at the RW Lodge on February 13th, 2019. This was before we submitted the RSB application and we had more than 250 community members in attendance that evening. The second was located in the county building prior to a planning commission meeting in late May, 2019. We counted more than 100 people in attendance that evening. Beyond the planning commission open houses, we had three additional planning commission meetings that all included public comment periods. Second, we moved on to meeting with the council on the 7th of June. As you may remember, we have four work sessions open to the public before the council meetings and a total of five public hearings, all with public comment periods. More than 100 people attended these public meetings and at all of them, the comments in support of WPR's development far exceeded the negative comments opposing the project. The second concern that I would like to address is about the development and associated open spaces. As you may remember, we are required to preserve more than 60% of our 11,500 acres as private open space per our development agreement with the county. We are going to exceed this and preserve more than 7,500 acres. This is a contractual obligation that we're taking very seriously as deviating commitments would jeopardize. would jeopardize our entire network. A quick summary from the development agreement, WPR's open space area will be delineated and managed through an open space management plan. This open space will be permanently preserved pursuant to conservation easements, plat notes, deed restrictions, or other restricted covenants that cannot be amended. In summary, we feel that we've incorporated a significant amount of community feedback over the last three years, and have provided ample opportunity for community members to express their opinions, and those opinions have been far more positive than negative. It is unfortunate that there is a vocal minority that continues to push against your approval of the RSD, our vested rights, and are pursuing an appeal against the county. We will defend the agreement that we all worked so hard to put together. Thank you for your time, and I hope all of you have a pretty good evening.
Thanks, Ed, we appreciate the update, and we did receive the written information, and we'll see what we can do to make sure people have a link or that it's available for them. Thank you.
Perfect, and, and I'll share my name and number.
Okay. Take care.
You, too.
Please ensure that the microphones, speaker, and dialer are placed back on the charger. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see anyone else listed, and I didn't receive any further emails to read. Okay, we'll move on to our next business item. First, Lance Evans, continuation of a public hearing from the Planning Commission on April 23rd, 2020, a discussion decision of the Cox Platt Amendment in Peterson area to reduce the irrigation easement on Lot 1 from 25 feet to 10 feet. This was on our agenda last time, and it came back, I think, for purposes of an answering question that was raised by Mr. Peterson, if I recall.
Yeah, so the concern was that there were modifying the 25-foot easement at rear Lot 2, down to 10 feet, and that it might affect the overall irrigation system. I've spoken to the property owner and also the Peterson Irrigation Company, and basically we have this drawing of the irrigation system. This is the lot in question, where the lot, where the easement would be reduced to 10 feet. That line is a truncated line, it ends just the next lot over, it's only 10 feet once you cross this lot line, has no effect on the overall irrigation system, it's just for that area, and really doesn't go too much further, another 150 feet or something. So 10 feet is plenty of input for you to the, both for the ditch company and the property owner, so, it is not, it's not going to have an impact on the overall irrigation system. And so I believe that addresses the question, the concerns that, you know, we want to make sure that the whole system functions and operates, but this is the end of the dead end line, it's not going to impact anything.
And is this the Peterson Irrigation Company?
Correct.
So, he had mentioned another irrigation company in his correspondence, and that was just an inaccurate reference?
No, that was, that's a subset of the Peter, overall Peterson.
Okay. Okay. All right, think through that clarification. Any further questions for Lance?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Robert and Arvela Cox subdivision plat amendment to reduce the irrigation easement on Lot Number 1 from 25 feet to 10 feet, application number 20.012, located at 2901 North Morgan Valley Drive, based on the findings and with the conditions recommended by the Planning Commission at the May 5th, 2020 meeting.
Second.
Okay, we had a motion to approve by Member Newton, seconded by Member Haslam, are there any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next item is an application by Sean Crossley, discussion decision regarding the code requiring geohazard survey and reimbursement for cost relating to said survey. There was written material submitted in connection with this application, that you had an op, that was included in your packet, and then we have Mr. Crossley's phone number, we can give him a call, and he can present his application. Should I move, should we do that?
Please ensure that the microphones, speaker, and dialer are placed back on the charger.
Hi Sean, this is Robert McConnell of the Morgan County Council, your item is now up for discussion, so please feel free to go ahead and present your materials.
All right, thank you for letting me come before you, and I guess, hear my grievance. I sent everybody on the council a letter explaining my position, and what had taken place with my geotech survey, you know, I just wanted, first of all, to know if everybody received that email.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I believe everyone's indicating they received it.
Okay, I don't know if you want me to rehash everything, but bottom line is, I feel like, if, after watching what happened at the last council meeting with Mr. Rousier, I feel that my situation is not identical, but very, very similar, and in light of the discussion of putting in more allowance based on building size and slope, that those are very critical to prevent the situation like has happened to me. The other thing I would like you to consider is that it's an existing house, it has gone through earthquakes, Peterson Creek has flooded, we have not had a debris flow associated with those floods, and so it's reasonable to expect from a citizen's perspective that there ought to be somebody within the county planning commission, be it a geologist or whoever, could come out to the property, take a look around, and use some common sense and logic, which ultimately is what transpired, although they did, because of the code, require me to dig a pit, two pits, which impacted my utilities, cost me a significant amount of money, and the bottom line was, standing on top of Peterson Creek, looking around and saying, gee, this is probably not a problem. And, you know, so I, I feel like I've been damaged by the requirement, and I, I hope that you feel the same, and would be willing to at least consider reimbursing me for my costs, or a portion of the cost even, considering what happened with the initial earth tech geologist, who had no business being on the list to begin with. And, you know, based on that, I hope that, you know, please consider my resolution to be forgiven of this high cost for something that didn't need to transpire.
Okay, thank you for your comments, you're welcome to stay on the line while we discuss this.
Okay.
Frankly, my position hasn't changed in, over the course of the two weeks, but I know, I know other people feel differently, and I'm not unsympathetic to the position and believe that we should look at our ordinance, I frankly don't know for sure that it will change, but it is something that I think that we ought to look at, given these two circumstances, but my view, I'll just restate it, because I feel people are entitled to know why I vote no on something, is generally, you know, ordinances should be generally applicable, and when their past is generally applicable, they should be uniformly applied. And I don't like the one-off opportunity to come back and, and request reimbursement, and I think it just results in additional people doing the same, so, that's my position, but there are others on the council litter.
My position also hasn't changed on the last, while I am empathetic to Mr. Crossley, and I was to Mr. Rousier as well, it's my experience that when you allow an exception for one, you allow one for everyone, and frankly, the county can't afford an exception for everyone who comes back for this, so, my position also hasn't changed, but I know there were only a few of us who actually voted no, so.
As another one who voted no, I, I would echo that, that, I'm empathetic, and I, I know I get credited for the geotech ordinance, and I know the reasons why we've done it, and, and it is unfortunate that we, that we are in an environment where we have, in order to ensure the safety of some, we, we end up catching those who feel unfairly caught into the net, but, we have a history of, of geologic problems that we are trying to address, and the best and current way of doing that, and that's why the ordinance is written the way it is, so. It's a tough one, I understand, and I am empathetic to the cost, but the ordinance stands for a reason, I have to stand behind the ordinance.
The one, the one element that he raised that is, I'm a little bit troubled by, is, I think it's an $800 charge from the county engineer to, to attend the site visit. I, I don't know that the attendance is required, and, and frankly, the...
Pretty hefty bill for showing up to a meeting.
Yeah, I mean, if, if the ordinance requires the, the payment, if it requires attendance, that's fine. Does it require attendance by the engineer?
It does.
Okay.
They need to do a field inspection of the trenches and the holes, is there being done?
Okay.
Is there a reason that takes four and a half hours? Is that because he's got travel time involved?
Travel time, it's time on site, 800 seems like a lot, but...
Is that for the actual engineer, or is it Elliot's?
Or the geologist to...
That, so that's Elliot's time?
So, so why, again, it comes back to my whole issue with it in the first place, but, why is he required to hire a geologist, and then he's required to pay the county geologist to confirm what the geologist he hired is telling him, or deny it? Why, why would we double, double hammer these people on these ordinances?
Sure. The intent is not to punish anybody, but to ensure that the work is done, up to code, and so it matches. We have, there are geologists doing a professional review, Morgan County is actually very respectful of professional licenses, and generally speaking, if someone says, and a professional license says this is the way it's supposed to be, we take their word for it, and all the law apply it, but on this particular one, the code said we need to actually check the work and make sure, and...
Yes.
So it didn't, just, it didn't just require a peer review of the report, it required field verification, is what the ordinance called.
And, and I'm aware of the circumstances surrounding some of the others where, why they did that, there was, and, there is, there is a step in the requirement for why they have to be there personally, and we had gone over it with, I had gone over it with Elliot over circumstances that happened with the one you're very familiar with, and why that is in there, because it's unfortunate that we find ourselves in these circumstances, but...
And, and I get that, and I, and I understand exactly where you're going with that, it's just so hard for me to look somebody in the eye and say, we're going to require you to hire a professional engineer, and then we're not going to take his word for it, you're going to pay our engineer to do it, too, let's just let our engineer do it, then. Now, I don't want that, because any of these things, I think we're accepting liability when we say you're going to let our person tell you what you can and can't do. That's why, building permits now, your plans have to be stamped with, by an engineer, because our inspector is no longer telling you what you can and can't do. On the other hand, our inspector should not be changing with those engineers stamped, and I see it the same as this. That, that person is professionally licensed and insured, and when they stamp that, they take on that liability. When we accept, when we start making these kind of demands, we're now pulling that liability away from that engineer, and they're going to say, hey, I gave you my report, your engineer changed it, or your inspector changed it, and that's when the county ends up footing the bill, and the citizens of Morgan County start buying houses that have fallen off a mountain. I think we've got to either do it, or get out of it, one way or another, and, and I know that's not a topic for tonight, but when we, when we get this ordinance back to review, I'd like to look at that part also. We either, we either trust the professionals that we're forcing the citizens to hire, or we tell them we do it ourselves, and we'll inspect it. This bill would be a fraction of the cost if it wouldn't, if that, the two engineers had to go through that process.
And I, and I, yeah, and I think that that's, we, we took that out at, at one point in the process before, because that's what was happening, but my understanding of what's happening now is not that we, that they're, that it is just, this, this is the list of requirements that are in, that our geological, our geotech person required, their engineer goes and does that, and then our engineer goes and says, yep, you did all of these that we required, not, it's not a double checking of the work.
Well, if he's doing a site inspection, he's doing, he's actually surveying the ground and, and doing that, he's not just...
I didn't think they were surveying the ground, am I right on that? That they were just making sure that the, the list of requirements, based on the geological survey, that these are the list of requirements we gave you, you finished those, and we're signing off, that you finished the list we gave you.
I think it's just like the inspections that you would do with the building department. So, a licensed engineer signs the permits, but we, we send our inspector out to verify that the work's been performed correctly, and consistent with the plans and specifications.
Because it's different than our building inspector that's part of his building permit, this guy's charging $800 to drive up and look at it.
Yes, but our building permit fee is based, I don't, I don't know exactly, is it a percentage of the cost in the back?
Right, yeah.
I mean, I was looking at a...
But, but this is a being included in that building permit fee that our...
No, no, this is, this is a separate thing required by ordinance.
If it's just one of our staff inspections, then it should be included in that building permit fee, and it should be covered that way, not a separate charge. I understand we don't have a, a full-time geologist on staff, but...
And, and I think we do need to be careful, if we're going to require these studies, I think we do need to have someone competent to review them, and make sure they meet the requirements, and, you know, don't make outrageous assumptions and things like that, but, I mean, that charge was 800, his engineer charged him 7,000, or 7,800 dollars to prepare the report, so, comparing the two charges, his...
Well, I was going the other way, I was saying if our engineer did it, he would have an $800 bill instead of a $1,000.
Oh, yeah, except I don't think our engineer wrote the report, or, you know...
Yeah, I think it's a check off of the list.
But, again, we can look at that as always part of the ordinance, but that's not in front of us tonight, so...
Right, but I, I don't mean to get us off on that, I just wanted to get that up, and hopefully I'll discuss it later.
Yeah, I, I understand, because we, we pulled it out once before for those various things happening, and because the liability would come back to us if we were actually signing off on the work.
Okay, might as well be the bad guy. So this is the deal, we're looking at, at Mr. Crossley's, and I ended up talking with Lance, and we had a discussion about, about the ordinance. What we're, what we're running into a difference is the fact that the ordinance that Mr. Crossley was required to follow was in place in November of 2019, and most of the stuff that he had done was after the fact. I'm, I'm looking at...
After the ordinance was in place, or?
Yes, correct.
But, he began his process in September.
Yes.
Late, late September, so he was under the old code when he started.
Oh, so he was under the old one in the middle.
So was it an old code, or was it a pending ordinance? Because there's a difference.
Yeah.
Well, it was a pending ordinance.
Okay, so if it's a pending ordinance, then he's still governed under the pending ordinance?
That's correct.
Okay, and that's...
He would have got caught either ordinance. He had these fees, whether, if we had never changed our ordinance, he still would have had these fees, not the field inspection fee, that wouldn't have taken place, but, the issue of, and I, and I don't mean to put words in Mr. Crossley's mouth, but, this is something that he had to do, that, you know, he got caught in the brush, brush.
But even under the old...
Or under the former ordinance?
He would have had very similar, maybe not quite as much cost because there wouldn't have been the field inspection under the old ordinance, but he still would have had 7,000 or whatever from the...
So what's the, what's the field ordinance? What's the field...
That's our inspector went back.
That's that $808.
The new ordinance in November put a field inspection requirement back in.
That's the 808, correct?
Most of the 808, yes, as I understand.
So in this situation, the only thing that changed was the $800 field ordinance test based on the change in ordinance?
I can't say that for sure.
Well, I mean, as far as the requirement goes, the requirement goes. Not the conditions that they found, I'm saying just the requirement that we had.
Which was different.
We added that...
The new ordinance definitely added that.
And that's different from the last one we discussed in that it wouldn't have been required at all on the last one had we not changed the ordinance, correct?
Correct. Does that sound right, Sean?
We talked...
That's correct.
I mean, so I got a problem with the 808-50. The rest of it, I think, is just part of being caught where our ordinance lies. I mean, it's, it's a bad deal, but that's...
And that goes back to the fact he was located in an alleluial fan, which we already know the alleluial fans on the map indicated you have to have the geotechnical...
Correct.
This 808-50 has not yet been paid to the county, as I understand, right?
I don't know.
Based on his letter, he said it hadn't yet been paid.
So Sean, has the 808-50 been paid?
No, it has not. Because my biggest issue was the fact that you require me to hire a state-registered geologist to get a full report with pictures and then you have your guy come out, climb in the hall and say, "Yep, those pictures are accurate." And then they stand and talk about what they saw and agree with it. And I guess the biggest heartburn I have is the proximity between me and the mouth of the canyon that all the houses and dwellings between were taken into account when we stood on the ditch bank and not prior to digging hole in my yard, which is where all of the cause came from. So this was insult injury and, you know, I'm really having a hard time paying four and a half hours for a guy to spend at most 45 minutes on site.
So Lance, is the 808-50, is that something that comes to your department?
No.
Is that something that Sean is paying to the county or is Sean paying...
The county has paid that 808-50 to our consultant. We either bill Sean for that 808-50 to pay us back.
So we've already expended that money. In other words, we could potentially waive that charge, right? That's what I'm...
Okay, so...
We're not talking about a refund here. We're talking about a waiving of that 808-50.
Okay, but so then the question comes back to Stacy's bucket, buckets of money. Where does the 808 come from? Because I got a problem...
It's already come out of Lance's budget that he uses, that he collects off.
With, yeah, with the...
Yeah, with the anticipation it would be reimbursed.
It would have to come from general fund.
To his budget.
So the question would be, if you want to waive that, are you going to make his budget hold because he's already paid that?
Correct, that's why I was trying to figure out the bucket. So right now, it's out of Lance's bucket, correct? It's out of your planning department, you've paid the 808?
Yes.
And he's had 12 permits since March, so he's got so much money.
I'm not allowed to access that money.
That's all in impact fee money.
And where do we do... Where'd the money come from on... Non-departmental? All right, Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we do not bill Mr. Crossley the 808-50 that the county reimburses the planning department out of non-departmental fund.
I'll second that motion.
Here's your another budget resolution, Stacy.
Okay, so we have a member, a motion by Member Haslam and a second by Member Newton. Do you have the motion, Stacy? Any questions on the motion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Nay.
So where was Daryl?
Daryl, I think, was the, was the A.
So that motion passes.
No.
No. Kevin McConnell and Swan opposed.
Yes.
Sometimes pronounced as I.
Okay, Mr. Crossley, did you understand what we did?
Yeah. One thing I don't understand is why you didn't consider the $1,100 I spent. Look, the firm that was listed, Hyde County, is an acceptable firm that turned out not to be, and it's been removed from the list.
Okay, Lance, go ahead.
So we had a lot of people calling and trying to figure out how to fire the geologist that would be qualified to work in the county. And so as a courtesy, and the list that we handed out said just this, that here's a list of people who have done work in Morgan County. It's not an exhaustive list, you can choose anybody you want, but just trying to be helpful. And we have since not removed them from the list, we don't hand out the list anymore. But it was just, it was there to help and it was not an endorsement of anybody. We listed everybody who has done work in the last several years in Morgan County. It was a very unfortunate and disappointing experience and much more so for Mr. Crossley, I'm sure. But it also illustrates why we have another geologist to review a professional geologist's work.
Okay, were you able to hear him?
I'm glad that I've talked about this before.
Okay. Unless there's another motion, then I think we'll move on to the next item. Thank you, Mr. Crossley.
Thank you for your time.
Please ensure that the microphone, speaker and dialer are placed back on the charger. Thank you.
Our next item is Kathy James, Morgan Conservation District. Discussion decision, request the county council review whether the current Morgan County Noxious Weed Control Program mandated by the Utah Noxious Weed Act meets the standards of that act. And this is Ms. James, if we could get her on the phone.
Hello?
Hi, Ms. James, this is Robert McConnell of the Morgan County Council. You're on with the council if you'd like to present your item with respect to the Noxious Weed Control Program.
Okay. So I'm watching you on YouTube and I'm realizing there's quite a delay here. So I think, so that I don't, I'm thinking I need to just turn you off, otherwise there's going to be a phase away.
Yeah, turn off your, or at least turn it down.
Okay, yeah. I took you off. So this is a request from the Morgan County Conservation District. I'm an associate member of that. I'm not sure what would be the best way to proceed. I can just, I guess I'll just give you a little background and then go through what we're asking and take questions if you have any. So the Conservation District is appointed by the Conservation District Act and it's the job of the CDs to partner with state and federal land agencies to plan and complete conservation projects that improve resource conditions, particularly relating to soil and water, but broader than that. And I, the point of this call is not to describe the job of the Conservation District, but to say that because that's their job, they're aware of weeds in the county and there is still some concern during the last year, not only just in terms of weeds that are growing along the railroad, which has to do with railroad maintenance, but throughout the whole county, prevalence of direst load and other noxious weeds. And no one is entirely sure exactly what the county is doing to prevent and control them. And I mentioned in the agenda item that I submitted that there's a separate act called the Noxious Weed Act that really directs counties to come up with a program to control their noxious weeds. And all counties in the state are expected to do this. And I think that Morgan County has chosen not to appoint a weed supervisor and under the Noxious Weed Act, they have that discretion. But they, it is mandatory that whatever your program is, you have a program to address this because it's an ongoing issue across the state. So that's kind of the background of where this request came from. We're just not sure what's being done. And under the act, you're supposed to make an annual progress report of what you're doing, you being the county. So what we've asked in this agenda item is that you, that the council, take a look at what, how much funding is being allotted annually for this for the last three years and review for the last three years what the progress report has been of, you know, what the program is and how the county is tackling noxious weed control. And then we've made a suggestion of contacting, just in, in doing this research, contacting the state noxious weed program manager, whose name is Aaron Eager, and I included his cell phone. He can be spoken, you can talk with him for free and he's very enthusiastic about getting all counties in state on board with robust weed prevention and control programs. So we're just encouraging that the county contact him as kind of an outside, an outside expert. And then after this review has been done, to review what your program is and as well as, you know, we said, take whatever other steps you want to take in terms of looking at this and then make some findings and recommendations about whether Morgan County's weed control program is sufficient, is effective, is meeting the state standard. So I ticked off discussion and decision, but it's clear from the item that this is, we're actually asking the county to do a little research into that and to present in two weeks, the first meeting in June, what you find out about the county noxious weed program. And I mentioned that the request comes from the Conservation District, but the Conservation District did want to make clear that weed prevention and control is not under its universe of things that's supposed to be doing that, that it's actually counties who are supposed to have, be creating programs and hiring supervisors if they so choose. So that's my explanation. Oh, I can take questions or whatever you, whatever you like. And I meant to thank you at the beginning for taking my item and I think I forgot. So thank you for hearing me out.
You're welcome and thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions for Ms. James?
I have a question. Do we have, do we have a supervisor for noxious weeds prior to Mike Wade?
Prior to Mike Wade, yes, there was kind of a, well, I think it continued even through Jay, right? It was a toad, but I can't remember his name. Anyway, he was killed in an accident, yeah.
Okay.
And then, and then Jay Palmer's crew took it over and did it and then Mike Wade did it. Mike kind of ramped it up, did a little bit more with it. And that has continued under Brett. Jason Rose is the one that has been certified to continue the weed control.
And that was my next question, is somebody has, on their crew has to be certified in this and so...
Both Jason and Brett have done certifications and they are both certified. And they spray every...
Are you asking me a question because I cannot hear the discussion?
Sorry, there was just a question about who is the current weed supervisor? And it sounds like it's handled by Brett Heiner and Jason Rose.
Correct.
In our department, who I guess received certifications with respect to the weed control. So that's, that was just a discussion. Any other further discussion? So is this something that we could ask them to review, the state statute?
They are the ones that enforce this and do everything. However, to do that by one of the first or the next two meetings in June would be absolutely impossible. This time of year is the wrong time to, for them to start sitting down and reviewing policy. They're in the thick of it and they are very, very busy for the next two months. It's something that they could probably look at as they're going into the winter months and they have some downtime and they're just doing snow removal and maintenance. That's more of a time for them to look at policies and review policies rather than this time of year.
So we have a weed supervisor, do we have a program? I don't know the answer to that.
We have a county ordinance, I know that.
We have ordinance, but we also participate, I mean, just in, was it last meeting or two meetings ago that we donated money to the bag of woad program and we participate by providing dumpster for that?
But that's the Conservation District and so, so that's the difference. You have your Conservation District and then you have your Noxious Weed Board and that's what we're trying to get determined.
Now, are you asking, does the county have a noxious weed board?
Yeah, that's the, that's the question. Do we have a noxious weed board?
I can't answer that, I don't know.
Well, actually, the question is, are, you are not required to have a board, but you are required, excuse me, required to have a program in which you are taking active steps to control and prevent noxious weeds. If the act gives counties some discretion as to how they decide to tackle this problem, but the point of this agenda item is to, is to ask for a review of what is happening for the last three years. And in other words, can we see some progress? Does anybody, you know, do we even know what we're spraying and do we know how much is being sprayed? And are we tracking, what are we taking care of? What, what have we not, you know, managed to knock off yet? You'd be interested, I think, to just do a little Google search and take a look around the state and see how other counties handle this, you know, because some have far more extensive programs than others. But it will give you some idea of what other counties are doing. But the bottom line of the agenda item is to just ask, hey, what are we doing? And are we tracking what we're doing and how do we, because otherwise I'm not sure how we would know whether we're successful or not. And then, and then the other thing is that, and if you, if somebody, it might be a good idea to assign somebody to call Aaron Eager. He, he is just a stout of information and he, I called him and he pointed out to me that, you know, some counties just don't have the tax base. have the tax base to fund it. I'm not, I don't think that's probably the case in Morgan County, but at any rate, if funds are a problem, there are a lot of state money to address this, if Morgan County feels that it doesn't have enough money. But the point of the agenda item is to ask you, what are we doing? Can we hear what's been happening? Please present what our progress is, and then let's decide whether we're doing enough. Does that give you a better sense of what the point of the item is? I'm not just asking if there's a weed supervisor. I'm actually asking for some research to be done and for somebody to kind of get a sense of what's going on in Morgan and are we doing enough.
Okay, yeah, that's helpful.
So we do have a weed board, and they have presented to the council before.
A board or a program?
A board. And we do have a program. If we would like the weed board to review that program, we can do that.
So why don't we do that? If that's the preference of the council, we can have them review that. And I don't think that this is a suggestion to report the first meeting in June. They may not be ready to do that. But we can, as soon as possible, have them prepare a report analyzing our program with the state requirements. And the recommendation to contact this Aaron Egger at the state may be a good one. If there are state funds available that we could utilize to help control weeds in the county, that might be a good idea. Because we are not flush with funds.
Yeah. Well, that would be terrific. And we made all those steps just because we thought that those would be the minimum to take if we're going to thoroughly explore this question. But of course, if there's anything else to be done, that would be great, too. And, yeah, I understand that the first meeting in June might be too soon, but I appreciate as soon as possible timing. That would be great.
So I don't know that we need a motion on that, but who can carry that back to the...
I'll have Brett contact the weed board.
Okay.
Ask him for a review of that. He's the one that works directly with them, so.
If anyone believes we need a motion on that, then I'm willing to take one, but it seems like it's just a directive. Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Ms. James.
Okay. And how will I know when the final report will be given?
Well, you can watch for our agendas or Stacy, would you be able to give her a call and let her know? So we'll have Stacy send you an email or give you a call when we get her on the agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Take care.
Okay. Yeah, bye-bye.
Please ensure that the microphones, speaker, and dialer are placed back on the charger. Thank you.
You know, she never asks for permission to speak. She just goes right in.
Yeah, she just goes right in.
Okay. Next item, Member Ballantyne, discussion decision support for the Morgan High Cheer Team 2020 Flag Program.
Yeah, I don't have the charm of the cheerleaders when they come present this, but they just ask for our support for their flag program. They've asked if we would donate $360 for 12 flags this year to be put out, starting Monday with the Memorial Day holiday, and their holidays are on the list there, so.
In the past, we've always asked them to move them for the parade. Are we having parades this year?
Hope so.
We hope so.
So...
Parade is something that could likely be done well with...
If they can do one on Friday, we ought to be able to do one in August.
Yeah.
Probably what, start in...
We can social distance that pretty easy.
I guess. Operation Graduation.
What do we normally pay this out of?
It comes out of, it's out of economic development on, I can't remember which one of the taxes, but it's, I think it's either TRT or restaurant.
I want to say restaurant.
Yeah, it's probably a restaurant. It's tourism.
Is that kind of the amount we traditionally do, or is that...
It's a slight increase.
We've done 300 in the past.
60 more bucks.
I should ask if you're a little more patriotic issue.
Is that an extra flag?
Two flags.
What was the amount?
360.
$360.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we support the Morgan High Cheer Team with flags for $360.
With the caveat that they move them to the parade route, if we have a parade.
With caveat that they move them to the parade route if we can, in fact, have a parade.
I'll second that.
And is coming out of restaurant?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Member Swan, second by Member Kilmer. $360 for the 12 flags moved to the parade route if we have a parade out of restaurant. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Hi.
Member Haslam, discuss the following roads and direction going forward. Deep Creek, Woods Creek, Field Stream, and Mountain Vista.
You just paid out of the...
All right. So this sum's been getting kicked down the road for years and years.
Have you done the best?
Member Kilmer and I've talked about it. We disagree on some parts of it. But the biggest thing we've got...
I'm ready for you, so bring it on.
Oh, no. So the biggest thing we talked with, so the reason I listed these ones, Deep Creek is a huge issue. We've got Woods Creek, Field Street, Mountain Vista. So Deep Creek is all private property. It has been used long enough that we can do a prescriptive easement. We can take control of it and make it a county road. Woods Creek is all owned by the Gailes. It's kind of the same deal. Field Street, we've determined that it is a county road. We just determine whether we're going to do maintenance on it, if we're going to put any money into it. Mountain Vista was approved as a private road. It was recorded, crossed out when it was recorded and wrote in pen to become a public road.
Is that the one we discussed a few weeks ago?
Is this saying it's Vista Drive? Is that the same thing?
Mountain Vista's up here.
It's not Vista Drive?
No.
It is Mountain Vista, but some people might call it that. I don't know.
Okay. Is it drive by Sharon Burns, drive by Sharon Burns' house?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I think so, yeah.
So, yeah. So on Deep Creek, what we've got to do, and that's why I'm willing to take it on if you want, we've been kicking all this down the road. We just need to make decisions whether we're going to push forward, take control, file with the state, have our public hearings, mainly on Deep Creek, Woods Creek. Mountain Vista is a whole different deal. Like I said, it was approved as a private. It was recorded, crossed out as a public. It's been...
County manager wrote a letter.
County manager.
Make it public.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that was hap, I can't find anything, you know, as far as Mountain Vista that the council has accepted that as a county road. So that's a debatable deal.
Mr. Haslam, there's one other road that I'd like to have on this list, and that's the back road in Croydon.
Okay.
And it's a similar situation.
There is a back road to Croydon?
Yeah.
Well, the road that, we have a sign that says, go this way to Lost Creek there.
Oh.
And the county paved it many years ago, but it's never been...
Many ways, the transfer title never took place once the county accepted them as county roads. So we have nothing saying they're county roads. We've just maintained them.
We've maintained them.
So are we even, because one of the concerns that I have with this is we should have these on the list for B and C road fund reimbursement, and they are on that list?
Roland and I went down to the state, and we got the map, the full list. We got all the maps. We met with them. We went through it. We've identified all the roads that are in question. Some of them we've been collecting road funds for, and we haven't maintained. Some we have been not collecting road funds for, but have maintained. Ownership is not clear. It's a matter of cleaning up titles, cleaning up which ones we want to keep, which ones we want to continue to put on the list, and which ones we don't want on the list. This is a very small portion of the list. It's bigger than this.
I just want to make sure that we're collecting the B and C road money.
If we're, if, yeah.
Especially if we're going to be maintaining it.
Okay, so as far as the B and C road money goes, just because you collect it on a road does not mean you have to spend it on that road.
No.
Okay? No. So part of our problem we've had on the map, we've got seven maps. The problem is, map number one, map number two doesn't match. Okay? We've got roads on map number one that's not on map number two. We've got map number three that don't have roads that was on number two and vice versa. We've got roads that are, that have, at one time, Summer Ridge, that is all private, was listed as a B and C road. And so we're trying to clear that up, take those private roads out. So the only reason I come up with these, and I ain't got a problem with the back road to Croydon, is we have a lot of people that were having issues with Deep Creek. Okay? Right now, technically, Deep Creek is a private road. Okay? The county asphalted it. The county piles it. The county maintains it, but it is, it is a private road. It has been used for 20 years. Well, a private, a public one only has to be used for 10 years. But we just need to decide, are we going to push forward and go ahead and take control of that road, make it Morgan County property so that we can spend money and maintain it? Or are we going to give it back to the property owners, say, here you go, for Morgan Valley Drive On, is all private, we're not doing anything else with it? That's the step that we need to decide what we're going to do.
And we're specifically talking about Deep Creek? Because I see, right now, right?
Yeah, right now, yes. That's why I want to start with these, because they're the ones that keep coming up as a huge issue.
Okay. So in my reading of the correspondence on Deep Creek, it didn't sound like we have a choice, that it has, it is by definition a public road.
No, we've never finished the paperwork.
But by every legal standard...
Yeah, there's a difference between the definition and it actually being...
Yeah. But my point would be, we can't abandon it now. We need to finish the process to make it a public road, but by every other standard...
You can abandon any road in the county if you go through the right process.
Okay.
Okay, so that's what I'm trying to figure out. Technically, it is...
Why do we have it a public road?
Technically, it would be a public road, but we've got to finish the process. We've got to get it surveyed. We've got to get that property into the county's name. Because right now, it's all in the landowners. Okay? We can choose to abandon it, but we have to have a public meeting. We have to tell everybody, hey, this is what we've decided to do. We are abandoning Deep Creek Road. We are no longer maintaining it. But we have to have a public meeting and tell the residents. Okay? The same way with Woods Creek. Woods Creek is all owned by Dwight Gailey. So that's what I'm asking. This is something that's been getting kicked down the road for years.
You're right. We need to do something about it.
Okay? I don't have a problem with going through and finding out who all the landowners are, finding out what the procedures are on each one of them, because they're all going to be a little different, especially like Mountain Vista. Brett and I talked about Mountain Vista. We agreed to disagree. Because of the letter that Garth Day wrote, he feels that it should stay and be maintained as a county road.
Well, and I think that's the one that we had on our agenda a month or so ago, and we, the council, approved it as a public road.
So they did approve it as a public road?
I thought we did as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that one, I think, is easy. So when you say we haven't finished, it implies that we started. But I take it that we haven't started.
Sometimes we're starting, though, simply we started to pave the road, or we started to maintain it.
Lots of conversations over lots of years that they were happening before we got on here.
All that's ever happened is they've had a conversation at this point, and that would've been the end of it. Okay? So it's never been finished. So like, for example, my in-laws live up Deep Creek. Okay? When they first, when they first purchased the property, it was supposed to have been recorded and turned over to the county. Okay? That never got happened by the developer. Okay? Well, then, when Morgan, when we went through and they widened it and blacktopped it...
Was it platted? Is it a platted road?
No.
So, okay, they were going to, never been advanced by a D.
Yes. Okay? So then, when the county went through and widened it and blacktopped it, the same thing was supposed to happen. That never happened. Nobody's finishing the process. We're just saying, okay, okay, nobody's finishing the process. Well, so now you have two landowners that are griping and complaining. We do have a letter from...
That they don't want it to be a public road?
Yes. We do have a letter from the state ombudsman on one of the landowners that's saying, you know what, sorry, man, this is, by, in all means, this is a county road now. They just need to finish the process.
So we're worried about a lawsuit that the county with there?
No, no. It's not, there's not a lawsuit. They would end up, they would end up refuting it.
The two landowners who want to keep it a private road.
Yes.
Why do they want to keep it a private road? Because I don't have any money to maintain it anyway. So, me being the county.
If you knew the two landowners, you would understand.
Okay.
So there is a state statute for establishing a public road. It's the 10-year timeframe that you're talking about.
Yes.
I've never understood that to be self-operative, and I wouldn't want it to be self-operative because then anybody can go out and say, hey, county, public's been using this one for 10 years, too. You have to maintain that. So I think what it would involve is an action pursuant to that statute to have it dedicated as a, or judicially declared to be a public road at the width, I assume. The blacktop improvement that we did, has that been more than 10 years ago?
Yes.
So I think we could probably claim it at least to that width and move forward with it that way.
Well, and that's my question.
And what I would do is I would have the adjoining property owners who want to just dedicate, dedicate, and then I would limit my action just to the section that...
They want to dispute.
That they want to dispute, so that the other property, we don't have to name all of the other property owners who want to dedicate.
So to me, the issue with dedicating it has always been that the county, if you come to the county and say, I want to dedicate this piece of road, the county says, sure, you need to pay to have it surveyed, and then come to us and we'll accept it, right? I mean, the road in front of my house has never been dedicated. I built the house on a lot of record, and we never did a subdivision. We never dedicated the road. So my property line goes to the middle of the road. And I said, I don't want that. I'd rather dedicate it. But the county wanted me to pay for a survey, and I said, I'm not going to pay for a survey to do it. Leave it, leave it be, right? So I think we need to decide, if that's what we're going to do, then we have to go through the expense of doing the surveys on these roads so that...
Correct.
...property owners aren't penalized for dedicating the road to the county.
It's one of the reasons why we keep, because the discussion over whether or not we have a surveyor on staff like other counties, larger counties do, then it's not an increase in cost, it's just allocating their time. But where we don't have a surveyor on staff, then it becomes more expensive. So that's...
Well, I mean, there's, we got some steps to get done before we get to that point, because we still got to have our public hearing, you know, to tell the public what we're going to do, what our intentions are, whether we're keeping it, whether we're not, you know. And so that's my reason for this.
It's not going to be a right on any of these. There's going to be opposition and...
Yes, on everything.
Welcome to the county. I've never, have we done anything yet?
And I was simply trying to outline the process, as I understand it. I don't have a strong preference either way.
Can we turn it into a toll road?
Frankly, I paid to have my road dedicated, too. You know, the costs were spread out. Developers pay it, and then they pass it along to the buyer. I mean, that's the way it all works in the world, you know? So, but under this circumstance, where it's been this way for a long period of time, then it's hard, they're not going to do it voluntarily. And to get them to do the dedication, we'd have to show up with a legal description saying, we want you to dedicate this portion of the road. They're not going to come in with it.
Well, it's one thing to ask somebody to do that when they're plotting a subdivision, you know, plotting a subdivision, that's fine. But when you're talking about a road that's passing through agricultural ground, I'm not going to voluntarily come and say, hey, I'd love to dedicate this to you and spend the money to do it, when I can leave it as is and it doesn't cost me anything.
No, I get the whole cost me anything part of that.
So is this special way? So, so this discussion right now is why it's never went anywhere.
Now do you understand?
What's the, what's the purpose, the public purpose for the road? How many residents do we have on the road?
So there's where I think this becomes an interesting question, because it's not necessarily the residents that are on, that live on that road that are the majority of the traffic on that road, it's getting to Deep Creek Estates on that very road. That's where, and that becomes the discussion over.
Let's take it as a public road.
We have one resident that lives on it, but it's an access road to the reservoir that a lot of people take. So, I mean, it's not necessarily.
Their new pavement is.
If they know, yeah, if they know that, if they've been on it, they don't because there's puddles big enough to swallow your car, but, but that, you're right, it's not necessarily about servicing a residence, sometimes it's about servicing.
It doesn't, but ultimately it deadends. This road deadends, correct?
Deep Creek does, yes.
Yeah, well, so.
In theory, I'm not sure where it does, but in theory.
It does, it deadends at the bottom of the hill.
The pavement, let's put it that way, the pavement ends.
Can I ask a question when you talk about servicing residents, and we'll use Deep Creek as an example? If.
Sorry.
If you were to not make that a public road, does that end our services when it comes to garbage?
Correct.
Meaning we no longer, okay, it's not a public road anymore.
Garbage, school bus.
Garbage no longer travels.
It also changes potential for future zoning, because if it's no longer a county road, well, you can't locate your home down a private road that's a mile long, right?
That's part of the discussion.
Well, it's probably not compliant.
No, it ain't.
There isn't any.
It ain't close.
Without a turnaround.
At best, you're what, 20 feet of asphalt on that?
Yeah.
Well, that's the width standard, but even the length standard for.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's nowhere near close to being county standards.
So it sounds like Deep Creek should be a public road. Right?
Well, theoretically, yes, and so that's what I'm saying. So there's, there's procedures to follow. You have to file, there's paperwork you got to file, and end up having the public meetings, saying, this is what we're doing. The county is now taking control, we need to get it surveyed. And, and that's, that's part of the other dispute is where the, where the road lies right now is crossing back and forth all the way up from property side to property side. So on one, on one part, on one part of the road, it's all on my property. When we go up the road now, it's all on Mike's part of the property. Okay, it's not split down the middle, which was, which was the intention. Okay, so, so there's lots of.
Under the state statute we've been talking about, I think it's going to be limited to the current.
To what is there right now?
Right-of-way, whether it's on one property or another. You could always decide to do an eminent domain and purchase the additional right-of-way to make it a compliant road, at least as to width. But that's probably a big expenditure.
Well, and so, so some of the reason why I've got this is I'm, I'm getting multiple complaints about Deep Creek. One, because my follow-up is there. But we got people, we've, we've issued building permits up there. You know, so the deal is, do we want to take it? Do we want to spend, because right now we're spending county funds on a private road. We have other roads in the county that are private.
Where we don't.
Where we don't. Where we don't.
So if we take this as a, as a public road, are we then obligated within a certain amount of time to bring it to county standard?
No.
Most of the roads in the county are not at our standard, to be quite honest.
Well, see Brett.
The new ones, but.
Brett told me it would cost, he, he had a bid, it would cost $400,000 plus to do Deep Creek, just to resurface what is there. From the turnaround, you know, from Morgan Valley Drive to the turnaround.
Again, can we make this a toll road?
Okay, so, so that, that's my question, do we want to?
If they get green belt, they should at least.
Do we want to?
Do you want to start the public hearings?
I think we need to, yeah.
Okay, so Mountain Vista is off the, is off the deal, you guys decided it was a public, a public road. Okay, so we got Deep Creek, Woods Creek, and you want to do Croydon? The back road to Croydon?
Yeah, I got a lot of push from folks up there that want to get that taken care of.
To make it a public road.
And I, at least the three largest landowners that have long, long stretches of that road are fully in favor of.
Well, because now it gives them, because now it gives them frontage.
But that next, yeah, that next one means they can come in for subdivision and, and.
I mean, they'd have to have the zoning changed, because right now it doesn't, but.
But it does.
It would give them frontage, and that's the same thing on any of these roads you're talking about. You know.
Yeah.
At least that one's not a dead end.
So where do we pay for this one, Frank?
Well, at this point, we're not paying for anything, we're just going to start the public hearings to.
Start the public hearings, most we would be at on cost would be this, probably the surveying.
Surveying.
For the, for the existing road. I don't know, I don't know if we can go in and say this, you know, if part of the paperwork allows you just to say, you know, the existing road is where it is, or if we have to actually survey where the existing road is and identify it. So that's what I need to, that's what I need to find out, but that's my question.
And let's find out on the public hearing requirement too, because I know we would, we might need to do a public hearing to exercise powers of eminent domain. I'm not sure we would need to just to simply file, file an action for the state. The dedication, but let's find out, I'm not opposed to a public hearing.
Unless I misunderstood him, I don't think it's going to require an eminent unless we want to expand the right-of-way.
Correct.
He was very knowledgeable and gave us a lot of information.
So do they consider?
Yeah.
Do they consider that right-of-way just edge to edge of the blacktop, or does it go like fence line to fence line if there's a fence, or how do they?
Well, that's what we got to find out.
Okay, fair enough.
That's all we got, that's what I'm, that's what part of the process, find out exactly what we have to identify.
If we're, if we're asphalting and then shouldering and things like that.
Yeah.
We're going to say it's edge of shoulders.
Do utilities run up through there too?
There's, there's gas to the first two houses, and then everything else is on propane? Or electric?
Okay.
All right, that's it. I'll start with those and go from there.
Our next item is mine, this is a discussion, potential adoption of a public infrastructure district implementation policy. This is a policy that was prepared by the law firm that, we asked them to send it to us. I, I simply went in and
Todd Whoopi.
And put in Morgan County and so forth.
The driveway.
To fill it out. There's. There's still some, I guess Freudian slip in this in the end, has me say Morgan County manager contact information, I must have just been wishful thinking. And I, I mean, I've obviously read through it when I made the changes, that basically what it sets up is a review process for somebody that wants to come in and do a public infrastructure district, and has them submit an LOI in advance, meeting the basic, and outlines the basic standards that we would want to review in order to consider that application. This policy actually has a committee, kind of a DRC type of committee, made up of certain designated members of the staff to review the letter of intent and make a recommendation to the council with respect to the LOI. If you then, as a council decided to move forward with the public infrastructure district, then there would be additional steps to take. But this just gives a framework for that process. This policy is not required by state law, so we, we wouldn't have to do that. I think we'll likely receive requests for public infrastructure district with respect to the Mountain Green Town Center area. I, it was in the development agreement for Wasatch Peaks where they wanted to have the ability to come in and do it. So this just establishes a policy pursuant to which that occurs. I don't know that we need the additional level of staff review, but I, I kept it in in case that was something that people here wanted to have happen. I don't think that it would hurt to have them review the LOI, evaluate it, and make a recommendation to the council with respect to it, so it's in there. And to the extent that you haven't had an opportunity to review it, if you want to look at it more closely, and then, and I can bring it back next time for a decision, that's fine with me as well. We just had the presentation, they sent us the policy, and I tried to Morgan Countyize it.
Yeah.
How do we determine the fees for this? I noticed there's blanks for that. Is that something that the attorneys will help us with? That Gilmore and Bell will help with?
They'll definitely help us with that.
I mean, they'll help us with their fee, but.
That is one other process, this policy has us hiring them, essentially. And, and we certainly would want to discuss that and get a representation letter from them and figure out what we want to do. I'm not opposed to handing, you know, hiring Gilmore and Bell, they do a lot of this kind of work, I think they would do a good job for the county. But that's something that.
But this is a, this is a policy we're trying, we're looking at adopting, correct?
Yes, yeah, I think we're, we have to establish some sort of process based on what we've already agreed to with Wasatch Peaks, correct? We, we will be addressing this at some point in time, it's whether or not you want to do it under a policy.
Whether, whether we want to do it on an ad hoc basis without any policy in place and just figure it out as they submit it, or if we want to think through, what are the things we want to see in order to have something that we're comfortable evaluating as a council when it's brought before us? So this, from my perspective, is a good idea, it imposes some structure to the process. It gives us an opportunity for staff review and a recommendation. And then I think this fee, I mean, we could certainly have, you know, the staff give us a suggestion as to that amount. It's really just covering the cost of the review.
Yeah, from what I understand, this, before the Utah State Legislature adopted this as a possibility, this was a well-used process in Colorado for development, so it's not new. But I do, I think I expressed it in our meeting going over it with Gilmore Bell. I can see where, for a developer, this is a great way to finance. And so I think the request is going to start coming forward frequently. We ought to, it benefits the county to have a policy for what you want to see before they start asking, because they will ask.
I think it's pretty likely Gilmore Bell and the underwriter that they work with are pretty actively marketing the public infrastructure districts to the development community. After the first presentation I heard on it, which was in connection with the council, I set up meetings with three separate clients to say, here's something that you can consider and work into your capital stack potentially. And it is very widely used in Colorado. And one advantage Utah has is they got to see Colorado's experience over a period of decades. And there's things in our state statutes that are helpful and protective for the district if it's ultimately created, and the property owners that weren't in the initial Colorado experiment. But it's used across the country now quite frequently.
So, so can we get, do we have like a sample?
Yeah.
Policy that we can?
Yeah, that's what this is, this was, this was prepared, this was the sample policy prepared by Gilmore Bell. I simply went through and where they had, you know, the name of the jurisdiction.
This here is?
Yes.
Everything except for that last letter, really.
Then, okay, that's my bad.
So, again, I wanted to start the process of the discussion. I'm, you know, I, I've read through it, I'm pretty comfortable with it, but if you haven't had an opportunity to review and, and think about it, then I would be more inclined to let you do that and, and put it back on the agenda for next time.
I'm good with that, I've read through it.
I'd like to, I. I misunderstood who put this together and exactly what we were trying to do, so that's my bad.
I, I do agree with having a policy in place, I think that's important to have prior to people asking for it. That's great.
All right, do we need a motion to move it to the next agenda, or should I just put it on?
So the decision of the chair, we're moving it to the next agenda, and you're good.
Okay.
Done.
All right, so if you can take the time to review it and look through, if you want to make suggestions in advance and send them to me, I'll try to incorporate them in the language.
Okay.
Or if it's minor stuff, we can fix it at the meeting. Next, this is again mine, discussion decision on approval of a $4,500 payment to the YCC Family Support Center for our 2020 annual agreement. Annual agreement is probably a overstatement. We, we contribute to the YCC on an annual basis, that's part of my portfolio assignment. YCC is the organization that we refer people to that are having, are in family and emotional crisis in the county because we don't have a separate facility. The various jurisdictions that are in this part of the state contribute to it. Weaver County, Ogden City, South Ogden, our county, our contribution is $4,500 per year under, they call it the WACOG contribution.
So is this in our budget?
It has been tradition every year.
Recurring.
They sent us an invoice, I attached it, I actually thought it was 5,000, but the invoice said $4,500, so that's what I.
It's on sale issue.
Yeah. They are, they are a great organization.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Motion to approve $4,500 payment to YCC Family Support Center for 2020 annual agreement.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion by member Haslam, second by member Newton, any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Work session, so that ends our regular agenda items. Member Kilmer indicated that he had one more work session item?
Two.
Two.
We brought a one after you went on break.
Okay.
First, I brought it up before, the, the school district offered the bleachers from the football stadium for us to transfer over to the fairgrounds and add to our assortment that we've been collecting over the years around the, the arena. We have the last year, last section of the old grandstand concrete bleachers left there. We want to eliminate those. What we want to do is just take them out completely, move our roping shoots to the other end of the arena, and move the bleacher so that people aren't staring into the evening sun at any of the events that go on there. And also it gives us the ability to use a bigger set of bleachers, because it's not pinned between the exhibit building and the gate, or the fence of the arena. It's a very tight, small spot. And those bleachers, I don't know if anybody's ever tried to sit on those, on that end, they are horrible, horrible bleachers. But if we have an opportunity to eliminate those and have the entire main football stadium bleachers moved over there right now. It is a time crunch, because they have a very small window that we have that we can kind of get them and, and move them before their contractors are going to be there to do full demolition and start the new bleachers that they're installing.
This may be a dumb question.
Doubt it.
So if you move your rodeo shoots to that end, then are the cowboys staring into the sun? And it probably doesn't matter for a bull ride, but if you're roping, it makes me wonder?
It's the, it's the ropers, but yes, they would be, but we talked to all the rodeo guys, including Brett Heiner, who is, has a long history with it and helps out with the roping on all the rodeos, and they all say it's going to be a better setup in the long run for the ropers, so.
Okay. So, and is that all self-performed work?
That was not a dumb question.
So, that's why I'm here. Our guys don't have enough time to do it by themselves and get it done in the window. So we talked to Jack Kleg, who is a bleacher contractor that does a lot of the arenas and stuff around the state, all over the west of the state. He's the one that helped us with our last one when we, we went up, got it, held it all here, and he helped us assemble it. And he has given us a price for the demolition, hauling, and reconstruct.
Demolition or removal?
Removal, sorry.
Just checking.
Good catch. The removal and, and then the reinstallation, and he's sticking at $15,000 for each.
So $30,000.
So $30,000. That would not include the concrete work for the reconstruction or any hardware we might have to buy. or any hardware we might have to buy if we have to replace bolts because the old bolts break or something and then we will process that kind of stuff.
You can't throw that in, $30,000?
We're talking about, to get that equivalent of seating, we're going to be between $350,000 to $400,000 to build that amount of seating if we were to put that in. And it would give us, I know this number because I did, my son's Eagle project was numbering those bleachers, and I want to say it's about 900 seats that it would add to our arena.
But that's before social distancing, correct?
We're, we're going back to non-social.
We're allowed 12 with social distancing.
If that's the case, we need to get that new set put over there so we can have 50 people in the stands. So anyway, what I'm asking is just if the council will support, what Mike and I have talked about is using that capital fund as much as we can that we've established for the fairgrounds, that money that we've put in there. Take that as far as it'll go, and then if we end up needing a little more, we will hit up our local organizations that have been so gracious to donate in the past with labor and things like that. A lot of times if we'll cover materials, they'll cover the labor. And we'll hit those guys up again for that kind of help on the reconstruction, but these guys will get in there and get this out of the way so that they don't have to smash it into a bunch of pieces and waste it.
It sounds like a reasonable deal from my perspective in terms of the benefit for the dollar spent in terms of the number of seats.
And we transferred just shy of $30,000 into that capital improvement account a couple of meetings ago. It was 26 or 27?
We'll be generating funds throughout this year if we never open them back up to rent. But we already are generating, we'll generate from our barefoot tubing, we'll generate from the cell tower. We're still, we have that money coming in, so. We anticipate we'll be able to cover most, if not all, costs out of that fund by the end of the year. But we'd really like to get this going.
Yeah, I say we move forward.
If we need to do a formal vote, we'll put it on the next agenda, but we have to have the bleachers out before the next meeting, so please allow me that.
I mean, if it requires an expenditure of funds, we probably ought to get it on an agenda.
Ratify it.
Yep.
We'll do it. I'll tell them to go ahead and move forward.
Is, was anyone object to that?
Okay.
That was item one.
Someday I would like to have bleachers that we planned for and put in on our own and not be the hand-me-down cousin.
It'd just be the $300,000 price tag, that's why.
If I could have gotten the bleachers I've been working on for two years.
I can aspire to be a grown-up county someday.
Manti City was able, through a roundabout way, get all of the NASCAR bleachers from Las Vegas Speedway when they replaced them. That person in Michigan thought he was going to make a bundle on it, bid on them, and then couldn't even afford to transport them. And so he ended up dumping them. And I want to say it was somewhere around $50,000. They picked up the entire NASCAR stadium from Las Vegas. They put that around their rodeo arena. It is massive and they only used half. And they're just sitting down there, and I've been trying to talk them out of those for two years. But their recreation director wants to build another arena or something, and so he keeps fighting. So they got, a couple of commissioners want to sell them, the other one isn't. They're fighting back and forth, and so they finally just said, well, we're going to have to wait until we settle this. So I gave up. But then the school decided to do this, so we'll jump to these.
Okay.
But I don't disagree. I would love to have one nice, beautiful set, but it's going to have to be when we have a better revenue source to fund those type of things.
Okay. Did you have another item?
Yes. So Mike and I were talking, we've got a fair board meeting coming up here on the first of June. And what we would like is guidance to take back to that fair board meeting of what the council's expectations are regarding the fair. You can jump in anytime you want, Mike. From my standpoint, I either say we do the fair, we do the whole fair, or we don't do anything. To just, to just try and piece a couple of stupid little things together and call it an event, I don't even like it. I think good. We've seen this move to yellow, and I think it's going to exponentially change now. And I, I would like to give them a wholehearted support to plan a full fair with events and everything for the end of the summer.
I don't know that that's realistic. I mean, if you talk to the health department, as someone who sits in the meetings with Weaver County, they're saying it's not realistic for us to give you a yes or no yet. So I don't know how we would do that without their blessing yet.
Well, then we have to cancel it because you can't ask them to put it on starting mid-July.
Well, I think you can. I mean, if Weaver County can put on a huge fair that's triple the size, I think you can. I mean, they may not do what it is.
They're not doing any planning for their fair now. They're just going to start it all in mid-July.
I mean, they have ideas in place for it, but they're not making any contracts yet because-
But we're already under contracts, and we've got to let these people know if we're going to cancel those contracts or not. They need to know if we're canceling.
Well, if the health department says you can't have a fair, whether you tell them to go forward with it or not, they aren't going to have a fair.
I'll fight them.
Good luck.
So I, I think mass gatherings will be the last things approved, you know, and so I-
Unless you live in Kaseville City.
Yeah.
We won't be the first ones to go, that, they'll go against the establishment, so.
Yeah, and like I mentioned last time, you know, on the other big- Event Board I'm on, I mean, we just made the determination. We can't-
Oh, was that on the record?
Plan on a contingency. We can't have people making, building floats and all that kind of stuff, you know, in order to get ready on the expectation that we might be allowed to have it.
Well, that's my point. We either, we need, they, they want to make a decision the first of June.
But I thought that from the beginning.
And so what I'm asking for is the council to say, we think you should do this or we think you should do that. But they, those people feel like they need to know by the first of June what they're doing.
That's an understandable request.
Is that fair, Mike?
Yeah, they want to make a decision as to how they want to proceed. And I'm not, I mean, and I think Robert and I differ on this. I, I would rather have something than nothing personally.
You could see the two little girls next door who cried when I told them that the rodeo was canceled. Anything would be better than nothing because those little kids who raise those pigs and those sheep should have something, even if it's something stupid or some stupid games. I mean, something would be better.
Well, that's the thing. The health department's already approved, the livestock show would go on.
But I, I know, but she's like, well, that's all there is? And then they cry because it's like their favorite thing of the year. So even if it's not realistic to have the rodeo and the other things, I still think with social distancing, they could find some activities that the kids could at least go to and do and still have some semblance of.
Well, we've already, so there's two items that we have contracts for. One is a rodeo and the other is a concert that we've already paid for the artist. We have not paid for the sound or the stage yet. But I think a concert can easily be accomplished, even if it's done drive-in movie style in the parking lot where people sit in the back of their truck and listen to it. That, to me, is easy to do. Now, who knows how the health department will like that? I don't know. But I think that's an option.
That's the thing. We're doing all these things. Everything that you guys are talking about, we're doing them. They're having high school graduation on Friday. They're having a livestock show June 2nd. We're doing these things already. I'm just saying, let's plan and do it. Do it right.
I, I think I would rather just tell the fair board they have our support as long as the health department allows it for whatever they want to do. But that's me, I don't.
I, I-
And we're here to look for your info, we're here to tell you what you should do. We're looking for input, so.
I think we're going to end up open, open. It's outdoors, in the sunlight, that's the best place to be. The only thing I, I could see it being limited to local, possibly? But for the local, why wouldn't you move forward?
That's my point. This is a big deal for a lot of people in this community here.
I agree with Mike. I'm going to think health department, pending approval of the health department, but like I said, if they say no, we're still on.
Let's do as much as we can.
I just think it's all mitigatable.
Roland disagrees, I can tell it's coming.
No, I'm, I've already had issues with the whole thing anyway. I'm-
You're ready to-
Give them the green light, let's go.
That one surprised me. I was not expecting that.
I was seeing the same body language you were seeing, so I was curious.
Thought we were counseling.
So.
These people are dying. I mean, I'm not saying literally, but our residents, Utah, I mean, we're, we're killing our people because we're, we're putting so many restrictions. Our, if you sit and look at, at how people have reacted to this, in my opinion, they have self-contained, they have done a dang good job controlling what they're doing. I don't think it's going to be total chaos. I think people are going to look at it logistically and think, you know what? Yes, I can, no, I can't, do I dare? I mean, you still look at how many people are still wearing masks. I mean, I went to a funeral last week. I just started laughing because my cousins were there and they had big black masks that reminded me of Planet of the Apes. They had rubber gloves on, you know, it's, to me, to me, people are controlling theirself. I think they're doing fine.
Two weeks after this, we're opening the schools full-blown. No halfway, everybody's sitting in classrooms.
They are getting their temperature taken.
You are getting your temperature checked.
As they get on the bus, yes.
And when they get off the bus. So don't get a temperature on your way to school.
Yeah, don't get off.
Whatever you do.
Don't sit over the heater in the bus.
And we do have permission to do rec sports outside. You just have to control.
I think the outdoors.
Yeah, by the way, recreation is moving forward.
That's great.
Okay. So I would go with the option personally. If you want to move forward, subject to the health department requirements, then that's okay. The part of it that seems hard to me for the social distancing is the mingling part where you come in and you're all walking in and that kind of part. That's the part that seems hard. I don't know how many people you get necessarily in a given event and whether you fill those bleachers or if people can spread out.
But we try to fill them. And we may not this year. But again, we're letting people police themselves. We're not putting the government thumb on them, telling them, you're not allowed to do this. If you don't feel comfortable coming to an event, don't buy a ticket, come to the event. But let people make those decisions themselves.
I don't know how the health department will govern our vendors for foods and things like that.
Like this is they will be handled, just like any other establishment, just like they are now.
The state fair is on. They posted a deal, state fair is going.
And the good thing about those food vendors is they're all like walk-up anyway, which is what we've been doing this whole time, so it's not like-
Yeah, I think you're going to have a hard time with the public bathrooms because I'm really tired of that.
Yeah, that may be an issue.
We'll have to make accommodations for that, you know. Our cleaning people will have to be more diligent and that kind of stuff. But I think, as I say, all this is mitigatable, and I think we can make it all happen.
Well, maybe some of those costs could be covered by this, right? If we have to hire people to clean the bathrooms?
But I agree with Tina. I think by the time we hit the end of August, we're going to be an entirely different world than we are right now. People are just-
I hope so.
The fact that they're getting out is going to just force the issue regardless of what politicians are going to do.
I love the option.
All right, what are we doing? I'm saying go.
Yeah, I think we're going to have herd immunity pretty quickly. That's because Daryl already had it and spread it to me and we-
That, we all wish we already had it.
I'm not just sure we haven't already had it.
It's possible. Okay. So I just would like to go into closed executive session if we can.
So do we make a decision?
I've heard two differ.
Oh, I, I guess I just said it, so I thought that's what I-
Well, I heard you three and then I heard Roland, but I haven't heard.
But, but I really, you really should get a consensus.
I think we should move forward.
Tina?
Yeah, I move forward.
So I guess the question is, are we, the only thing, we're moving forward consistent with the guidelines established by the health department? Is that what we're, I think that should be our public recommendation.
Well, it's going to be like anything else. I mean, if they come back down, when the governor comes back and says, you know what? We're going back to yellow, we're going, we're going back to red, there ain't nothing to do about it.
Well, my recommendation would be that any contracts they do or if they set up is contingent upon things that are out of our control, for example, if there's a-
Yeah, on the contracting side. And then I think we should, we should be an example for encouraging, following the social distancing, if that's still in place. If, if by that time it's all hugs and kisses, great. But if it's still social distancing, we should still be saying-
I only go so far.
We encourage social distancing. I don't know if we'll ever get back to even shaking people's hands, you know, but.
Okay, we're going? All right. Mr. Chair motion to go and-
Can I answer your question, Tina?
Yeah, I'm good. I have arthritis in my hand. I'm, I'm fine if we never go back to-
No, I'm talking about the money thing for the advertising that you're talking about.
Yeah, so, so have them contact me with what we want to do with it then.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll tell Chrissy's out of money, sorry. Yeah, let's use it for-
Chair. Mr. Chair motion to go into closed session, possible litigation.
Forgot about that question.
I'll second the motion. Okay. Motion by Member Haslam, second by Member Newton. Go into closed session, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I just need a few more weeks to not go to church, you know?